Welcome to the Fairfield Board of Education meeting. I'm going to start with the call to the order of the regular meeting of the Board of Ed. And roll call with us this evening is Mrs. Rotelli, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Max and Canelli, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly, and Mr. Asa. If everyone could please rise, and Mr. Asa, before you sit down, you want to start us in the pledge? Okay, first, we're going to start with our student reports. Fairfield Ludlow High School, you're up first, followed by Ward. Hi, guys, thanks for being here tonight.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Hope you guys are all doing well in the cold. On December 16th, Ludlow held our winter sports pep rally, and a surprise addition to the day's festivities was the Ludlow Mock Trial Team on top of all our athletic teams. A special shout out to Eli Mois and Ewan Dignan, the captains, for really rallying the crowd. In the week before the holiday break, Ludlow's music department put on the annual spectacular showing of Candlelight, which was enjoyed by the entire student population and members of the community. And then this week, students are enthusiastically looking forward to our midterms next week. The half-day format is very popular with seniors who are beginning to feel senioritis in anticipation of our graduation, and the rest of the students are diligently studying very hard.
Hi, I'm Agatha. I am in 10th grade. Happy New Year, it's very exciting. And I can't wait till it's my day to catch senioritis. Like, this is what I'm working towards. And firstly, firstly, we have the SOS Club. They're hosting a sweaters for mental health fundraiser. All the proceeds will be donated to Mental Health America, a nonprofit organization that focuses on mental health as a critical part of overall wellness. We also have the holiday classic athletic competition. The Ludlow Boys Hockey Team won their tournament, which is very exciting, and the Girls Basketball Team won their tournament as well. Caitlin Finnegan won Best Individual. Then we have the Spring Musical. Auditions for the Spring Musical are coming up on the 24th and the 27th, and we encourage all students to try out. I know a few students that are part of it every year, and I know it's a very, very exciting undertaking, as well as a very large one. They really do commit to it. They have to go almost every single day after school, so it's a very large commitment, and they really do love it. And then we also have PSAT. Scores are out. It's been really helpful, especially since our counselors are so dedicated to really helping the student population personally. I can speak that. My counselor went to my homeroom and handed out the pamphlets, as well as explained to us how we could access our scores. They did all of this personally, and it was extremely helpful to know that we had that support system when taking a test that a lot of us feel is very detrimental. So, yes, that was all for Ludlow. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ryan, and I'm a senior at Fairfield Ward High School. Today, the Fairfield Ward High School Counseling Department presented the Post-High School Planning Program to the juniors at 8:00 AM. Juniors were invited to the auditorium for a kickoff presentation. Also, this Wednesday, we'll be running a special activity period schedule with club meetings from 1:50 PM to 2:10 PM. It'll be great to get a chance to meet with our clubs and work on our respective projects. Also, our College and Career Center is hosting a gap year and summer program fair this Thursday from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Ward Debate Club hosted a debate invitational, which consisted of 45 teams, and out of these 45 teams, we placed 11th. We also hosted the Ward Wrestling Invitational, where we had 20 medalists, 10 finalists, and four champions. This past Friday, we had our winter pep rally honoring our winter teams and athletes. Some of the activities included performances by the dance team and cheerleading team, as well as half-court shots by students in the crowd and faculty. On our track team, we have two new record holders. Eda Moternik broke the 55-meter record with a time of 7:49, and Sophie Spellman, a sophomore, broke the 600-meter record with a time of 1:42.9. Go Mustangs! Also, our new DECA program was recognized in the Emerging Leader Series, which has a nationwide recognition. Finally, our Ward Gymnastics Team is up for Rootin' Team of the Week after scoring 136.8 points to defeat Trumbull, Ludlow, and St. Joe's. Thank you very much.
Any follow-ups for our students tonight? Mr. Peterson?
I'll just say very quickly that one of the few real big perks of being a Board Ed member is that the music department offers us tickets to both Candlelight and Carolon, and I've been fortunate enough to see both of the concerts, and they're fantastic. And for members of the public and members of the board who haven't, you should absolutely do them.
All right. Well, thank you so much for being here tonight, and as usual, you are welcome to stay with us this evening, or go on and do other things and prepare for your exams. Good luck with everything, and wishing you all a wonderful semester. Thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it. Before we start public comment, can I get a raise of the hands of people in the audience who are planning on giving public comment this evening, just so I can gauge our time here? Okay, that doesn't look too bad. Okay. All right, so we're going to engage, start public comment. You can come up to the table. When you do, please, just a reminder, you need to press the button on the microphone the entire time while you're speaking, and please give us your name and address. Thank you so much.
Frank Sahagian, 20 Chelsea Street. As you guys probably could see, I'm retired, and I have way too much time on my hands because you're getting way too many emails from me. But anyway, I thought I would share, I know I have the concern, you know I have the concern about losing sight of the middle schools during this whole redistricting process, and I'm glad to see that there's a scenario that does show that concern. I threw out something this morning, I woke up this morning thinking about this, and I said, hmm, this might be kind of interesting, and a different scenario to perhaps consider that I think is even better than the one we have that addresses the concern about middle schools. And that would be that Woods would get five schools to feed it, and they would be North Stratfield, Stratfield, Jennings, McKinley, and Burr. And those students all go on to Ward, as they already do. Ludlow would get Mill Hill, Riverfield, Holland Hill, and they would all go on to Ludlow. And Tomlinson would get Dwight, Sherman, and Osborne Hill, and they'd all go on to Ludlow. So, with this, with the benefits of this idea is that there's no breaking up of a single, of a class, of an eighth-grade class as it goes off to high school. It also resolves the team, crew, community size issue that was really the point of my being in front of this board many times over the last couple of months. And I think this is one that's considerably better than the one on the table, which has sixth grade going to Ludlow and seventh and eighth going to Woods. I know there's a concern, one, some of you were kind enough to respond to me this morning. There was a concern about, on one party, member that, board member, that Woods would be overcrowded. Grades three to current, five currently have 898 kids, which I was told is overcapacity for the school. I would add that when I taught at Woods in 2018, there were 950 students at Woods, and in 2019, it was 915. And it was very workable, it was crowded, but it did work. And I would also say, it's close enough, and we don't know where the lines are going to be drawn, so that's another thing to consider before you put this one in the wastebasket like you did with the other ones that I proposed. Lastly, the process, I wanted to just mention, I think should be in stages. Before having them do much work, running numbers on middle and high school, sign off on elementary first. And in that light, as Mrs. Vitale said last meeting, it should be able to get a quick answer on whether or not we can possibly close a school, which we probably can't. And lastly, as relates to the budget for seventh grade next year, based on the problem we had this year in sixth, I hope the decision is made to have smaller teams of three for at least a year. And I would just offer and say that while contractually you can go to 120 students on a team, from my experience, I will tell you that the optimal size and the dream size is 90. So, just to throw that out there as well, I would suggest in seventh grade, you go to three teams at Ludlow, even though the numbers are going to fight that. So, thank you very much.
My name's Ryan Morgan, 150 Glen Ridge Road. I'm a longtime resident of Fairfield. I went to kindergarten through high school here in Fairfield Schools, also the father of two boys at Jennings Elementary. My wife and I went to high school here, Fairfield High, when it was one school in the early 2000s, and I know what overutilization feels it looks like. It was very packed back then. I think we should be mindful that removing an elementary school from our town, coupled with the mid-to-high growth rate that we're experiencing currently, puts us on that same path. Frankly, there needs to be a strategy for us to get to a racially balanced school system, biased, sorry, racially balanced. Scratch that from, please, I appreciate that. Racially balanced school system, proper facility utilization, without making a one-time, step-change decision. I think that has more negative impact than positive results. My main question tonight's on Scenario Two. So, why bring ECC to one location? Why is this ideal? Why not bring all the high schools, or middle schools, or elementary schools to one locations? Because it doesn't create the most benefit for the most people. We've seen how other districts, such as Greenwich, have ECC options at all elementary schools. Should be no reason to repurpose one elementary, specifically Jennings, that's mentioned in Scenario Two, as an ECC. I work with large consulting firms often as part of my job, and when I'm contracting with them, I give them my guidance on my expectations, so that they can have an unbiased review of the data and come back with their recommendations without my leading their decision process. By having the option to repurpose Jennings left in the consultants rubric, it puts a target on Jennings School and will bias the consultants' review. Mr. Mancusi specifically stated in the meeting last week that there's no qualitatively clear best location for the ECC. Therefore, repurposing Jennings should not be specifically guided as an option. It should be going by the numbers and their calculations that bring us the results we're looking for, which I understand to be racial balancing, facility utilization, and fiscally responsible operating model for the BOE, not necessarily for the ECC. At that point, the community would use this qualitative response from SLAM, use our knowledge of the community, and determine an optimal path forward. Lastly, I think it's important to consider that any suggestions that come from the consultants, our town is mindful of the implementation timeline, so as to minimize any trauma that these implementations do cause to our students. On the heels of our teachers and our students recovering from learning and teaching in COVID, I think a 2024, 2025, one-time, quick-step implementation is irresponsible. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
I'm a fifth grader at Jennings School, and I live at 254 Lucille Street. I don't, this is my sister, this is my sister Vaah here, and I believe that Jennings does not need to be closed. I think Jennings is a normal, a perfect school, and it's, should remain open, and I don't think we should close down any elementary school, because it, we have communities at these schools, and we don't want those communities to come apart, and it also will not necessarily be economically helpful, as you will need to provide bus services to more people, and I will actually, if my sister will be going to Jennings next year, she'll be taking the bus to a different school, and most likely be, the bus will be passing Jennings, which is not necessarily efficient. And I also, although I know the Connecticut State wants redistrict, this, redistricting to happen, I don't believe it's necessary, because Jennings already has 25.6% of its attendees to, that are involved, are already minorities, so I don't believe this is necessary. Vaah.
Jennings is an amazing school, and I have a little, I have another little sister who will be going to Jennings, and she'll, and she'll be in first grade by 2024. And Jennings is a community, and taking apart any school would be taking apart not just the school, but would be taking apart a community, and it's taken a long time to build a community and build friendships and bonds between, between so many people. Jennings is an amazing school, and I don't think that it should be shut down for any reason, economic, or, economic, or for any other reason.
I'm just getting, just please, if we can hold applause after every speech, if you wouldn't mind, so we can move forward. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Brad Ziv. I'm at 11 Serenity Lane. If we were to use examples, and specific examples, of why Jennings should not be closed, I would refer to these two children who just got up in front of the board and spoke very eloquently. Jennings School taught them how to do that, their family, their teachers, and their community. That is empirical data on why you don't close Jennings.
I live at 49 Random Road in Fairfield, and I'm actually not distrited to Jennings, but both of my kids go there, and I think that I have a bit of a different perspective that I can share, because both of my kids are in the CLC and require extensive support. We started out in North Stratfield Elementary School with my older child struggling there in kindergarten, and she didn't get the support she needed, unfortunately. I think the worst, one of the worst days of my life was the police were called on her as a kindergartner because she was deemed to be unsafe, and we had many, many meetings with the administration, and the refuge that we found was at Jennings. The support that has helped my daughter to turn this terrible experience around, form friendships, and join this amazing community has been invaluable to us. We went from being in a position of crisis to, you know, seeing both of my children thrive. And I don't, you know, I can't propose solutions to all of the problems and issues that, you know, are bringing this to the table for your consideration, but I just wanted to share the perspective of someone who has trouble imagining that kind of caring and amazing environment being replicated somewhere else, and, you know, who went through this process of having seen other resources just fail to provide the support needed. So Jennings, I know, doesn't just help. My children, who are in the CLC, they have amazing support for families of special-needs children. Thanks.
First, I'm a Jennings alum, so kudos to you guys, great job. Jen Passick, 137 Townhouse. My kids came up through Burr and are now at Tomlinson and Ward. Thank you all for your hard work, putting our children first, and putting the redistricting matter, and giving it the attention that it deserves. I know it's not an easy task, and I know there's a lot of different emotional opinions and feelings coming out, and I appreciate you sitting here, listening through all of us. It's personal to all of us, and there's reasons, these are our children. I'd like to ask that we include our guiding principles, because I think those are things that we can all get behind, and I think one of those, for me, anyway, is the grandfathering, and considering grandfathering high school students specifically, the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. These are students who have, you know, as a parent, I've seen them go through COVID, I've seen the impact that it's had on them academically, socially, mentally, and emotionally on this population. Our kids need structure, they need consistency. That's one of the first things we learn as parents and educators, is the importance of that consistency. They haven't had that. This is the first year they're getting that real structure and that consistency. How can we take that away from them at this critical juncture in their lives? It sounds so simple and so basic, but to disrupt that could be detrimental to their mental well-being more now than ever. We are seeing higher rates of anxiety and depression in teens, and these students are different and should be looked at differently than our elementary students, who are adaptable and who are coming up, and I understand the decisions need to be made at the elementary level, but I implore you, please don't impact the high school students who have been there. We encourage them and teach them to develop relationships with teachers, counselors, coaches, advisors, and other school professionals. How can we emphasize the importance of building and earning this credibility to then switch them in the middle of this and have them start all over again in 11th or 12th grade? I understand there may be logistical and budget implications to grandfathering our high school students, but we can't continue to do things the same as we always have and expect our kids to adjust. We are in 2023, and I urge you to look at the issues we are facing and not respond with additional issues or obstacles, but to think outside the box, to help find creative and innovative solutions, to do things differently than we have. We are one of the wealthiest and smartest communities out there and in this country. How can we not lead the way for finding unique approaches to dealing with some of these old solutions, these old problems? So I ask you just that we critically think about this and look to do things differently. Why are we doing things the same way we always have? It isn't 1980. I don't want to hear about what we did 20 or 30 years ago. This is a different time. We have technology. We should have new ways of doing things, and I don't feel that we're providing creative solutions or approaches to these problems. I recognize the board needs to see data and the proposed costs of grandfathering, and I just ask, what is the cost that is going to tip the scale?
Sorry.
Am I at three minutes?
Yeah, it's all right. Thank you.
I think you get my point. I'll let others follow. I'm sure I'm not the only one. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Jody Berman. I'm at 500 Old Academy Road. I have a first grader at Burr and a ninth grader at Ward. I'm also a clinical psychologist in private practice in Westport. I'm here to speak to you both as a parent and as a mental health provider. I'm primarily speaking about grandfathering. It must be included as part of the plan, that's just part of the cost of redistricting. I understand that it might add cost, but the stakes are too high with our teenagers. They have, every, all these kids that we're talking about have gone through their teen years in COVID. They, these adolescent times are how they're building relationships, how they're developing their identities, and they have that ripped apart through their middle school. My daughter was in sixth grade when COVID started, and through eighth grade. There was no middle school. All of those skills they learned during that time, that got torn apart. Here she is, entering her freshman year of high school, so excited, and that normalcy is finally starting to come back, to hear about the fact that in two years, that's going to get ripped away from her again. She's been working so hard on, for teams, and clubs, and groups, and with classmates, to have to start all over, or maybe that spot won't be available for her, maybe that position won't be available, or that, that student government role because she moves to a new school. That's going to be devastating for these kids, re-traumatizing for these kids. They are at extreme levels of pressure, especially in Fairfield County. It's just going to be unfair to them compared to their neighboring communities. They're going to be applying for colleges. How are they supposed to be taking SATs when they're having to do such a major adjustment and prepare for their AP exams? And they're going, they're going to be distracted, they're not going to do as well, they're not going to be as focused. That's a detriment to Fairfield Schools as a whole, not just to my individual daughter. That doesn't reflect well on us. We're not taking care of our kids if we don't take care of them in this process. So I understand there are costs, I understand there are utilization issues, but like Jen has just said, I think there are creative solutions to these problems, and we need to use them, and we need to think of them. We are smart, we do have a lot of talented people here and elsewhere in the community that we can come up with a plan, but it's just not fair to these children. They have been short-changed time and time again, and this is, the stakes are too high, their mental health is, is already on the brink, and it's just not fair to them. Thank you.
On the microphone, you'll see, yeah.
Can you hear me? Yes. Hi, Jessica Morris, 76, Dill Road. We moved to Fairfield two years ago this summer, and after several years of being unhappy, we are happy. All four family members thriving. I would ask the board to consider allowing current high schoolers the chance to finish high school on their current track and allow families and siblings to stay together. The past three years have been tumultuous for all, but I'm sure you can imagine how difficult this has been for middle and high schoolers, especially ones who have already moved states and school districts and had to make difficult adjustments. When we left New Jersey, we had been remote in school for two years. Both of my children missed out academically and socially, both are behind in academic subjects, and mental health suffered greatly. Sitting in one's bedroom for school, if, during school for two years, and then moving states was very challenging for them. We, as a family, have worked very hard to catch up in all aspects, and it is still a struggle. If this wasn't enough to overcome, both children deal with learning disabilities daily, so that also complicates things. Asking my son to switch high schools in his senior year might be the single most, single worst thing for his academic career. He has worked hard to learn his new teachers, his new school, make new friends, and bond with coaches. He has started to build friendships on the football and lacrosse fields and relationships with these coaches. Hopefully, that will help in college. We will be applying to colleges his final year, and this is not the time to switch a teen who has and will continue to have more challenges than others. Asking my daughter to attend a separate high school from her brother would also be detrimental. Mental health, as I'm sure you can imagine, is a concern. My son and daughter are especially close and had been looking forward to spending one year together before my son left for college. They are both a source of motivation and inspiration for each other, not to mention the logistical nightmare, having children at two different high schools. I do not think it is in the best interest of my teenage daughter to have to get up at 5:30 every morning to take a bus across town while her brother drives one mile down the road to high school. I can't imagine the struggles this will cause for her and our family. So please consider allowing teens to finish on their current and upcoming high school tracks. Allow families to stay together in the same school. This particular problem is one that can be avoided. COVID and school closure, illness, losing friends and family members, moving states have not been avoidable. Measurable academic, mental, and social growth can only happen with stability, and this is the first stable year for our family in three years.
My name is Melissa Travis, and I'm at 270 Ward Terrace, and I have the perspective of having two sons who've gone through both ECC and are currently at Jennings. And they're both amazing places, and the fact that I'm even put in a situation where I would have to pick a side in a town like Fairfield is unreal to me. My sons thrived at both places, and ECC absolutely deserves their own place, but not at the cost of Jennings. We teach our children at a very early age that you don't rip things out of other kids' hands that don't belong to you, and one of these scenarios does exactly that. Thank you.
Hi, Rebecca Press, 237 Homestead Lane. I have a seventh grader at Tomlinson and a ninth grader at Ward. I have been extremely disappointed in what I have been reading regarding the redistricting for the projected 2024 school year. At that time, I will have a freshman and a junior at Ward High School, hopefully. The redistricting discussions happening now and the parameters that are using to give the consultants, they need to focus on the children. Please don't redistrict Fairfield to check a box without thinking of the consequences that this has on our children. Yes, you need to consider building utilization and racial imbalance, but most importantly, you need to consider our children. This is a different world than it was any other time we needed to redistrict. We know as a country, as a state, and especially as a town, how the mental health crisis is real. During these last three years, I have sat through more presentations than I wish to count regarding the mental health crisis our teens are facing. Each one of those presentations focused on the importance of a support system. Our teens need their family and Our teens need their family and friends, but is all, it is also imperative for our teens to have principals, teachers, coaches, and guidance counselors that they feel comfortable enough to reach out to when facing a crisis. I cannot even imagine the ramifications if our teens need to switch high school mid-career and lose part of their support system. By junior year, the upperclassmen have paid their dues. What about the students who were in line to become captain of their sports team, or the students who were in line to get the lead role in the school play, or have the solo in the chorus, the band, or the orchestra? What about the class officers who suddenly lose their leadership position, junior or senior year, because they are told they have to switch high schools? What will this do to them? After everything our children have gone through with COVID, haven't they been put through enough? I implore you to grandfather the high schoolers when giving the charge to the consultant team. I implore you to consider the mental health crisis that we are dealing with and the effects that this could potentially have on our teams. You have the power to do something about this. Our children have been through enough.
First of all, I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to all of us. I'm a parent of a junior and a freshman at Fairfield Ludlow, and I understand the new plans may include students changing, as we've heard, and I'm concerned with this and hoping that you'll consider exempting students who've already begun high school. You know, it's, it's hard to, as we all know, miss the studies and statistics on the current children's mental health crisis. In the experience of my freshman daughter, she feels as if middle school kind of passed her by, and she didn't have the opportunity to, you know, establish roots and, and find a community. The teachers and the staff is outstanding, but really no substitute for the time spent together, particularly with other students. As, as a freshman, though, she's been able, able to establish that community, including relationships not with, just with students, but also counselors and principals, drama teachers, all of her subject teachers. And, you know, during those middle school years, she didn't have that, but she has that now, and this is the first time we've kind of seen her coming out of her shell a little bit. I would hope that if we were to think about this redistricting plan, we'd think realistically on whether or not there's enough professional resources to support those students. You know, we had to find help outside the school, but I know that's not, you know, something that everybody can do. So as we think about, you know, what, what that plan looks like, how we're going to be able to support all the children. And the last thing is, as we watch our older student get into, you know, start the process to get into college, there's so much that goes into it between, you know, student recommendations, obviously preparing for tests, working with guidance counselors. The idea of starting a new school junior year and having to, you know, make new connections with teachers, work with the counselor who does not know you, you know, work on SAT help and prep, all those things, it, it feels very overwhelming. I hope we can support the kids, and I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Amanda L. Turkey. I live at 369 Melville. I'm a relatively new resident to Fairfield. We moved here in fall of 2019, right when my daughter started middle school at Tomlinson. So I'm, I definitely wouldn't call myself an expert at Fairfield, but what I am very experienced in is instability. We moved around a lot when I was a child. By the time I was 12, I had moved eight times. So you can imagine that that's something that I'm very familiar with and what kind of effect that has on a child, both socially, academically, just generally feeling that you have that sense of community. So that's definitely something that's a concern for me and something that I promised myself when we moved here, which we moved here for the, you know, the schools, is that I would give my daughter that stability through middle school and high school, that I would make sure that no matter what happened, we planted roots so that she could have that. And then, of course, she just got started, and then, you know, COVID happened, which nothing you can do, but she spent the next year and a half at home, so she pretty much missed out, you know, on a good, you know, two-thirds of her time in middle school. So when she returned, she felt still brand new, breaking into friend groups, social groups, making connections with her administrators, her teachers, was all a new thing. You know, she had lost so much ground, and then she finally transferred over to Ward, which is where she goes now. And she's made so many steps with a wonderful team of educators and support staff, counselors. Everyone there has been instrumental in giving her a sense of community, the friendships that she's built. The progress that she's made in her academics alone has been outstanding. I can't even describe the night or day that it's been for her, and that's everything that I'd hoped for. So when I heard about the redistricting and, and how, you know, we were considering eliminating the grandfathering, it was definitely a concern because to uproot one more time and shift completely, not only is it, you know, changing from your friends or how you get to school, but it's totally new teachers. Her math teacher alone, just his approach, how he, you know, speaks to her and communicates, has made a world of difference just in that one subject. You know, we know that a great educator, a great team, great support staff, everyone in that building can make or break a child's experience. And to completely shift gears, it's just heartbreaking, you know, for me to think about because, you know, I, I thought to myself when we moved here, I said, seven years, we can stay, stay put for seven years, we can handle seven years of, you know, a stable. And to have two upsets in that short amount of time, I just, I can't think of anything that I would want to avoid more. I really do think everyone's had wonderful thoughts on how important it is for grandfathering to be kept, and I understand it's definitely, you know, understandable that it might be a logistical nightmare, but I agree with all the other parents. I think the kids have really sacrificed enough.
Sorry, time's up. But thank you.
That's okay. Thank you so much.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
My name's Deana Ryder, 400 Flintlock Road. I'm a Dwight parent, and I would just like to advocate for not closing any, any elementary school. I love seeing parents coming out to support their schools, but the battle we need to be fighting is to save all of our elementary schools. The data clearly shows projected enrollments are only expected to climb, and we know with our recent real estate and baby boom, we know those numbers are likely higher than we think. Closure of any elementary school will only lead to overcrowding and redistrict even more students than necessary. This will have a domino effect throughout the entire town from K through 12. We also know based on Fairfield's history that a school closure has never been the right decision. For the sake of our town and our kids, please take school closure off the table. Thank you.
David Krasnov, 155 Burr Street. So the past six months have been up here saying a lot of the things that I love people in the audience are now coming out to say. I do think we definitely should keep open all the elementary schools. I think most of the board has come to that conclusion as well. So that being said, I'm going to talk about something else on the agenda, capital planning. In terms of the capital planning, since Jennings and Dwight will probably stay open, we need to plan better. I did like the supplemental thing that you guys included today around 4:00 PM. It did answer a lot of questions, but I would love to see what it would be year one, year two, year three for both schools. And if possible, there's a lot of neglect at both schools. What would be done in terms of neglect if those schools were to be pushed out the 10 years on the capital planning? I know there's things at Dwight, and I'm sure there's things at Jennings that need to be fixed. They've been neglected. Thank you.
Katie Flynn, 204 Grand V Road. I think a very important question that is still left unaddressed and unanswered is how redistricting should and will look different from past redistrictings in our current environment while still actively dealing with the COVID pandemic. We know that school-aged children are facing the experience that no one in this room experiences a child. What additional supports will be put in place? Not to sustain the currency, but to support an obviously negative impact that will be had to any child that is moving. To not acknowledge that reality actively in relationship to this current process, to me, is both shortsighted and will ultimately be very harmful to our students and any possible buy-in you're going to get from our community. We continue to hear active discussions in regards to operations, state statutes, facilities, and the possible budget implications of redistricting. No guarantees of a budget, just implications. This body needs to equally discuss the socio-emotional concerns, mental health, and academic outcomes of this possible redistricting.
Nope, where your hand is.
Right here?
Yep. Nope.
I have to keep on holding? All right. I walked in late, so apologies. Martelli Borrier, 260 Barry Scott Drive. I'm relatively new to Fairfield. My family moved here, or we moved here in September of last year, and in looking for a house, we wanted to be in a very good school district. We're not from Connecticut. I'm from Georgia. My wife is from Alabama and Ohio, and education has been very, very important to us. And so in looking for a house, we wanted to be in a good school district. We found one on Barry Scott that we really liked. We looked up the school, and we saw that it was Jennings, and we did a bit more background research, and we said, let's go take, take a look at it. I have a public school background. My wife has a private school background, and so she was an advocate of private schools. I was an advocate of public schools. We went to Jennings, and we spoke with Principal Valo, and my wife immediately fell in love with the school. He answered all of our questions. We, we had questions about, you know, having a, a, a son who's a minority, and how would that look like? And he assured us that it would be fine, and we decided to go with Jennings. And so far, it's been just an awesome school. My son comes home every day saying, I love my school. I love my school. I love my teachers. I love my friends, you know? And it's gotten to the point where his little brother, who's two years old, has already said that, oh, Ms. O'Connor is going to be my teacher, who is the kindergarten teacher at Jennings right now. And so while I'm not, while I'm relatively new to this community, I'm a strong advocate of not closing or repurposing Jennings. I think it has been a trip, and my son, who's five, who didn't have a formal preschool because of COVID, you know, he's adjusted well in, in the school, and the school has such a community feel to it. And so I, I would strongly recommend that you think twice about closing Jennings down, and also think twice about what would be the unintended consequences to closing Jennings down. You will have parents that pull their kids out of the public school system. You will have parents that send their kids to private. You will have parents that pool their resources together and create small homeschool pods. And so I would think twice about closing a school that has been such a great school and community, and I can say that because on the street that I live, I've canvassed the street. Everyone has kids who are in their twenties right now, and so, you know, they talk so well about Jennings, and that's all I have to say. But think twice about option one, which repurposes Jennings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Leanne May, 193 Applegate Road. So in converse to the gentleman before me, I have been here since 2005, 2006. I have lived on Applegate Road the entire time. We are walkers to Stratfield. We are walkers to Ward, and we bus 35 minutes to Tomlinson. I can tell you that the conversation I've sat on the PTA boards at both Tomlinson and Stratfield in this conversation is really pre-COVID and exhausting and stressful. So I'm just going to read the letter that I wrote all of you for the benefit of the folks behind me. I'm asking why we're redistricting 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. We have a sophomore at Ward, an incoming eighth grader to, to Ward next year, class of 2027. We live, as I said, in Stratfield, and we are current walkers to Ward. Our family is active and enmeshed in the school community. I, as I said, I sit on the boards. Our kids are on teams, varsity hockey and softball, incoming basketball and softball. Our girls are actively involved in Fairfield's wonderful music program. We have a strong connection to Ward High School, even my, my eighth grader. She can't wait to be there, really. The administration, Mr. Givana, their coaches, teachers, the community, their friends, the music program, everybody is outstanding, and the thought of having to leave it after my fifth grader, my now eighth grader, had to like have a drive-through graduation from Stratfield because she was pulled out and then have to start Tomlinson halfway, you know, with, with cohorts and such, it's really, it's, it's unnecessary added stress. I need these kids to graduate in a place that they feel comfortable, where they feel supported. I just, I can't urge you enough to just leave these kids alone, you know? Let them graduate in the place that they have looked forward to, of where they have gone, and let them stay with their friends and their support system, and it's really, consider their mental health. I mean, there is so much stress right now that these kids just do not need another thing. Thank you.
I'm Caitlin Helgivold, 82 Coral Drive. I'm a proud Jennings mother of a kindergartner and hoping to get my two-year-old, when the time comes, into ECC. I'm also a minority, as you can tell. So a lot of irons in the fire here. I can appreciate where you sit and all the complexity that goes into this, and I appreciate your help with it. I wanted to offer a new perspective on grandfathering this evening. If I'm in your shoes, I'm thinking, wow, sounds expensive, complex, and it can leave strife wherever you draw the line for our community. You've also heard the feedback around the questions of the antiquated law, and what is it, does it really make sense in today's world when it's been written in a world where the internet didn't exist? So I offer an idea for your consideration. Continue the redistricting plan to solve utilization and keep our schools from overcrowding. In tandem, request an exception from the law of the rebalance, to be out of compliance with our rebalancing law while we reevaluate the quality of the law in light of a post-COVID world, in light of the world that we're in today. If you're, if you offer McKinley parents and parents of minority the option to go to any school in Fairfield and they decline, that should give us all pause, and I'm in that boat. Before we uproot our lives, I would ask that you all stand behind this law and confirm it's in the best interest of the children at Fairfield. In essence, what you'll be doing is grandfathering everyone in for one, two, three years while we reassess the law and potentially come up with a law that makes more sense in today's age. Thank you.
Hi, Natalie L. Wanger, 152 Fairfield Woods Road. I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Jennings, and I have the same sentimental perspective of those you've heard tonight, but I am also a literacy coach in New Haven, and I've taught at schools in Bronx and in Bridgeport, always striving for equity. With that history, I know what it takes to meet students at the widely varying academic levels. If redistricting is to set academic balance, meaning state assessment averages will even out as opposed to showing the disparity there is now, what will central office and administrators do to support the needs of the lower-achieving students in the new setting, which now includes students at higher levels? The teachers at other schools are not likely properly trained in differentiation and progress monitoring. McKinley's EdSite data shows that prior to COVID, the school improved nearly 15% in literacy and 10% in math.
I'm Antonia Galionopoulos at, I live at 116 Frog Pond Lane. I'm also a Dwight parent, and I'm new to this community. My daughter's in third grade at Dwight, and she loves her school, and she would be in the fifth grade when everything, when the redistricting would occur. So I'm here to ask you to please keep Dwight open, but also to grandfather in any fifth graders. She's had such a hard time with COVID as a kindergartner. I feel like I saw the learning loss almost every day in first grade and second grade with the cohorts, and now she's had the best year in third grade. It was her only normal year, and I can't, I can't imagine her having to move in, in two years. We should keep Dwight open, but we should also think about grandfathering in fifth graders and also, of course, high school students as well. Thank you.
There is none for this evening. There's no given forth in the public comments. Sorry. I shouldn't even be answering the question of your question. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for speaking. And there'll be another opportunity before any voting items this evening and at the end of our meeting, also to give public comment if you haven't already. All right, moving on to, you ready? Presentation of the superintendent's proposed 2023-2024 operating budget. Mr. Testani. Do we have a copy of the presentation or, oh, it's coming right now. There you go. Thank you.
Good evening. Is it working? Okay. Good evening, members of the board, members of the public and those viewing from home. Happy to present tonight the 2023-24 proposed superintendent's budget for the Fairfield Public Schools. I'd like to first thank everyone who worked extremely hard in preparing tonight's presentation, those folks at Central Office and all the folks who provided input along the process. Getting started in Fairfield on November 1st and transitioning has been quite an experience, extremely enlightening. And I've taken a lot of the input that I received through individual meetings with board members, staff members, parents, and central office administration as we developed what I would call a very fiscally responsible budget for the 23-24 school year. Be a brief overview, fiscal framework, a district improvement plan and building on current successes, the budget requests, and also future challenges. Not going to read the Fairfield Public Schools' mission, but obviously you're all familiar with it. The 23-24 superintendent's proposed budget increase is 4.09%. What that means is a total budget of $210,772,558. In that budget, it over, it, overall, it calls for, again, a 4.09% increase and an increase of 7.45 full-time employees. Framework of this budget is built on multi-language learners, student well-being, right-to-read and vertical alignment of literacy and early literacy programming, critical maintenance to our facilities, educational data tools, technology replacement, the ability to sustain class size and utilizing existing and repurposing resources. It is a structurally balanced budget. It funds critical maintenance contracts and insurances, which will make up your. It is aligned with the district improvement plan and the goals set by this board and approved back in the spring of 22. There are utilizing and repurposing existing resources to offset and limited increase to the budget due to critical mandates. Everyone is aware and can access the district improvement plan on our website. These are the four major buckets of the Fairfield Public Schools District Improvement Plan, academics and professional growth, SEL and equity, student support, and community. Although it's a fiscally responsible budget, the goal is to maintain the excellence of the Fairfield Public Schools, respect relationships with families, faculty, and community, manage costs, reallocate current funds to limit increases to the budget, sustain our class-size goals, and support strong program for, programming for student academic and social emotional success and growth. As mentioned in some of the public comments tonight, we want to build on our successes. And there are some highlights over the past year that need to be part of tonight's budget so that we can continue to build on success and experience more success for our students and our community going forward. Five of our elementary schools have received recognition as schools of distinction. Connecticut State Department of Ed measures each school and district on a set of 12 indicators related to preparing students for college, career, and life. Those schools are Burr, Holland Hill, Mill Hill, Stratfield, and Jennings. And with some hard work, we plan to make that all 11 of our elementary schools moving forward. That is our goal. We have the establishment of the Early Literacy Academy. This has housed currently two classrooms at McKinley School. Teachers receive professional development and coaching in implementing and interpreting effective methods of assessment and able to identify the most critical instructional needs of each student. Students receive daily intensive structured literacy instruction. Teachers receive support from Literacy Howe and Dr. Margie Gillis. And students demonstrate growth and overall reading ability. Again, this is a collaboration with Literacy Howe. Fairfield Public Schools expanded services for students with dyslexia and significant language-based disabilities in our elementary schools. Part of this budget will be the expansion of the Early Literacy Academy by one classroom. What does that look like? It's an effective, cost-avoidant measure when it comes to comparisons to students that would be outplaced. As you can see, staffing, we have two special four literacy pairs accounts for about $450,000. There is zero transportation. 15 students are currently accessing the program at a cost of $30,000 per student. As you can see in the comparison, if these students were outplaced to receive services to meet needs, it would be roughly a little more than that cost. So this is an effective measure and allows us to provide those additional dollars into other areas of our, our budget. Social emotional support, as we've all heard countless times, our students are struggling. Our students' mental health is a priority here in the district. We do have a multi-year plan that is identified in the district improvement plan. As part of that plan, we have launched a district-wide SEL, Mental Health and Wellness Steering Committee, being held, led by Principal Greg Hassett over at Roger, excuse me, Ludlow, Fairfield Ludlow High School. In conjunction with Mr. Hassett, we are working collectively to identify and plan for the remainder of this year and next year how we can do a better job and improve social emotional support. Athletics is an important component and part of our Fairfield community. Our student athletes. They also achieve a Class Double L state championship. So congratulations to the hard work of all our student athletes. We provide a scientifically-based research intervention program. These SRBI positions have been instrumental in providing support to students in need. They have also been a valuable resource for all teachers in providing additional support and ways to measure growth across all disciplines. SRBI teams work collectively with our teachers to look at student data, student assessment, student work, and teacher input to make decisions that are geared and tiered toward improving instruction and growth amongst our students. Interventions also work with students in a pull-out and push-in model to better support and reach as many students as possible. So what is, this is a quick glance at how the budget that we're proposing looks in comparison to this year's budget. As you will see, the vast majority of dollars as in the increase ask is in staff salaries. Those are contractual obligations and in health benefits, which is an increased cost through our, our participation in the Connecticut Partnership 2.0 plan. So we have a constant balance to try to make critical investments in our students, in our schools, in our community. We have also contractual pressures and mandates that we must adhere to. So the contractual mandates that we must adhere to are carrying over staff and enrollment adjustments. That accounts for 1.22% of the budget. Benefits accounts for another 1.18% of the budget. Maintenance plan and operations with transportation also causes an increase of almost 0.23%. Carryforward IT and instructional costs account for another 0.15%. And we also have to adhere to the Connecticut State Department of Ed and State of Connecticut right-to-read legislation. We are putting some of that initial investment in the current budget so that we can get started working with our staff to develop new curriculum and curriculum documents that will align, ready for rollout in the 24-25 school year. There is a proposal in here that will provide a board initiative that is much overdue in providing paraeducators with an appropriate salary adjustment. That accounts for almost 1% of an increase. This will hopefully allow us to not only fill vacancies, but retain our high-quality paraeducator staff. Turnover in that area has a profound disruption to our students' academic and social emotional performance. We, as I mentioned, are looking to add an additional Early Literacy Academy class that would account for 100, almost $103,000. We need to address the needs of our multilingual learners through mandated services. We are looking to enhance and improve our data-driven decision-making, allowing our staff and our administrators, it was something that was resounding throughout my conversations with teachers and with building-level administrators, that we need more efficient and effective access to data in order to drive instructional practices in the classroom. And then the addition of some additional staff through instructional leadership, social emotional support and athletics rounds out the, the major drivers here to the 23-24 budget. This is just a brief illustration on how some of our initiatives align with the different buckets of the district improvement plan. As you can see, many of them cross over to several areas of the district improvement plan. One of the issues, or one of the areas and initiatives that you will see under community is a product called Parent Square to try to increase our ability to communicate more effectively with our families, not just from a district and high-level school air perspective, but also from a teacher and more personalized experience that we can provide more effective communication, two-way communication between our families and our schools. Just wanted to highlight that as something that I think it has been, one of the topics that has been mentioned several times is the improvement of communication throughout the district. So targeted use of existing funds, the Early Literacy Academy. We will add one FTE to strengthen the in-district instructional capacity. Students with dyslexia or significant language-based disabilities will receive services through this program and we will provide instructional support intervention and professional development to staff. The paraeducators account for almost 1%. This will be effective July 1, 2023. And we are also looking at a more effective and way, as, as it's pretty well-known nationwide, shortage of substitute teachers causes a major disruption since the pandemic. Not having enough substitutes to cover classes when teachers are out sick for any reason causes us to have to pull critical staff to cover classrooms and which takes them away from their duties, whether it's coaching, interventionists, or other support staff. So we are looking at, and this is a net zero, we are working at looking at providing, having an outside provider that will be more effectively be able to fill rates. Will also be a more effective way to onboard. Our HR and payroll departments are spending extensive amount of time on substitutes. And as we know, this is a very fluid group of individuals, so we take a lot of time in onboarding. And these are folks that may not stay very long, may not work, you know, the amount of time we need them to or not, or not really start at all. They've changed their minds. So it's really important that we use a better and more effective and efficient way to get our fill rates up. Because right now, we are struggling, just like every other district, and we need to be more creative in managing our substitute recruitment. Again, this is a priority of our human resources department was to work to try to fill our paraeducator vacancies, but also stop the revolving door of paraeducators that were coming in and out of the district and leaving us for more lucrative opportunities in neighboring towns. We do have some enrollment adjustments in classrooms to maintain class size and services within position and program adjustments. We will be adding two elementary teachers. That'll be offset by the reduction of one kindergarten paraeducator. We will be reducing a math teacher to invest in a math coach at Ludlow High School. And we will be adding, due to the high demand of students requesting American Sign Language at the high school, we'll be adding a teacher in that area to fill that need. We do have additional coaching stipends that we will need to account for due to the Boys Hockey Cooperative needing to be split into one team per each high school, per the CIAC for future competition. Also for the addition of stipends for boys and girls rugby programs at both high schools. We will be looking to improve instructional leadership at our elementary schools by converting the 11 current program, elementary program facilitators, to 11 elementary assistant principals. We found as a, as a team, speaking with our principals as well, that this will be a more effective way to drive and lead instruction in our schools, at our elementary schools and provide more time for oversight and evaluation. And we will be streamlining our math department at Central Office into an executive director leadership position. Again, one of the major pieces of feedback that I received was on data and the accessing of data and how that data can be used to help drive instructional practices in our schools and in our classrooms. So we are asking to add one FTE, a data and assessment coordinator. So we are asking to add one FTE, a data and assessment coordinator. This would be somebody with an educational background to provide an educational lens through data and helping be the conduit between our IT department, our central office, and our schools. They will work directly with school leaders and their teams to support district improvement plan goals and objectives. We're also looking at a product that's an instructional dashboard tool to engage in data-driven decision-making as it relates to instructional and operational goals. We, again, need to add two full-time staff members to service our growing multi-language learner population. There'll be two that will service the elementary schools and one at the middle school, and this is per state mandates for services. And again, we are allocating $300,000 to begin our work to transition to and address early literacy in our elementary schools due to the right-to-read legislation that's been passed. District-wide student well-being is a priority, not only in our district improvement, but in the philosophy of everything we do throughout the district. So we will be converting a teacher-leader position to an administrator position to oversee and direct our school psychologists and social workers and work in conjunction with our Director of Special Education Services. We will also be adding two full-time district-wide school psychologist positions to evaluate and support students with social, emotional, behavioral, and learning needs, and those who struggle and are dealing with mental health issues in school engagement. We really looked extremely closely at our replenishment plan for technology equipment replacement. We think we've come up with a more effective and efficient way to replace technology that will service our students and provide them with the proper technology to complete and engage in their schoolwork. This will also include servers, faculty laptops and desktops that are aging out, as well as student Chromebooks. This includes funding for replacement of all grade six devices. As students enter middle school, they'll be given a device that they will utilize for three years of middle school, and students entering grade nine will be receiving a new device that will be assigned to them as they complete their secondary level education. And the balance of the Chromebooks that are end-of-life will be purchased with current year projected surplus or delayed for one additional year if those surpluses do not materialize in the next couple of months. We have some maintenance five-year capital waterfall enhancements, and that includes flooring projects at Burr, McKinley, North Stratfield, and Osborne Hill, a music suite, main office, a media center at Burr, and media centers at other elementary schools. We will be doing an auditorium lighting system upgrade at Fairfield-Ludlow High School and a much-needed sound and lighting upgrade at Fairfield-Ludlow Middle School. Budget-to-budget staffing changes. There'll be an increase in FTE of 1.725, mainly afforded with internal offsets. The FTE increases include the assistant principal change, data and assessment coordinator, early literacy academy teacher, the class size adjustments, the multilingual learner teachers, and legal services are also included in the offset. Most of the increase, as you can see, is contractual. The bulk of the increase is salaries and the amount of the contractual obligations of $2.4 million, and the increase to the paraeducator salary adjustment and the health insurance benefits due to the projected numbers that we've been given by the state Some of the budget drivers and future concerns is schools that struggle with rising sped costs. We have the reduction in Title I. We look to remain competitive. We are entering the final year, the final year of teachers' contract that will be coming up for negotiations, and we are aware of what the average settlements are across the state, so that is something that we are being very mindful of and watching very closely, and I'm sure the teachers' union leadership is as well. The health insurance costs of this year, we're anticipating, and we've been given a number of 9% to 12%, we don't anticipate that going down and just increasing over time. So that is something that we do have some concerns, and we have some discussions around what are the possibilities that, we do have at our disposal that we can use to possibly look to gain a little bit of traction on how we can rein that in a little bit better. And then our pupil, per pupil spending, excuse me, compared to neighboring districts, we continue to be higher at a little over 1% per pupil spending, as you can see when we compare ourselves to our neighboring districts that are across DURGs A, B, GH, and I. So we're not at the top, as you can see, but we're by no means not competitive in our per pupil spending in our area. And that is the conclusion of tonight's presentation.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Testane. We normally go into greater depth in our upcoming budget meetings and different sections that we'll be going over, but just looking to the board for any questions on just this presentation this evening that you might have for some clarity as we head into next week's conversations when we do the deep dive. Mr. Peterson.
Hi, I'm sure we're going to dive very deep into this, but in terms of the 11 elementary program facilitators, you're envisioning keeping the same staff in place, presumably? Are you going to hire?
So depending on certifications, it may not be the same individuals, but they will be the same staffing model, just transferred from a teacher on special assignment to an admin.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, hi, thank you very much for the presentation. Just a really quick question. The page 26, budget-to-budget staffing changes. When you talk about the internal offsets, you mentioned class size adjustments. I wasn't sure what that was.
That was the addition of the extra two elementary teachers and the trade-off of the math to the math coach.
I'll just follow up. Just to be clear, you're not recommending any type of class size changes for students in this budget? That's not what that is referring to?
No, this is-
Just to clarify.
Yeah, this is just to maintain class sizes in the schools that need additional staff.
Mrs. Kelly?
Hi, thanks for this. And again, I know we will go into more detail later, but one of the things of the budget drivers was the increased cost in sped, but when I look on page 17, it looks like year over year, the sped number is down, so I just can't reconcile those two.
Well, we know that there's the possibility of increases. Last year, there was a major adjustment in funding for special education that seems to have, for at least this year into next year, has righted the ship, so to speak, but that doesn't mean in the future that those things cannot be again. They're a moving target and could increase depending on student needs as we go forward. So we're grateful where we're at, but we're hesitant to just sit back and think that this is going to be the way it's going to be continuing into the future.
Okay, and again, probably more detail later, but just a little, have we, we are committing then to the two boys hockey teams? Is that, that's the commitment in this budget?
Yes.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry, Mrs. Maxine Kinney?
Thank you. Just a few questions, and again, anything that we can't do now, I'll submit, and so we can get more color on later. But starting on page seven, the student support construct, a multi-tier support system. I guess I don't understand the use of construct since we have one. So what's going to be done differently? Because I know that was one thing that I had requested, that before we hire any more staff specifically in this realm, that we, I would like to get feedback on what's the current model, what's being changed about the current model as opposed to just adding more staff? You know, where's the examination of, maybe it's an efficiency matter, maybe it's a staff member who's in five different schools, and if we cut down to a model of two different schools, I'm just, you know, making that one up. But whether now or later, that's definitely some, but I don't understand the idea of the construct in the first place.
Well, I think currently we are doing, as mentioned, a great job with SRBI. We think we can do a little bit better in incorporating the social-emotional component in the multi-tiered student support model, not only the academic but also the social-emotional, and kind of marry those two together. I think, obviously, this is a work in progress. You know, it's something the district has committed to. I think we just need to look at, examine, and constantly tweak and improve moving forward, rather than just sit back and allow things to play out. That's the importance of the data and the data-driven decision-making, and having data more readily available to staff in the buildings at their fingertips so that they can make adjustments to what support students are receiving, whether they're effective, whether they're ineffective, and maybe we need to change course. I think those are some of the things that we're trying to look a little bit more closely at, so that we're not just spinning our wheels, but we're really trying to target students' needs and make sure that the support and the intervention we're providing is effective. And if it's not, what needs to change, and what best practices we can utilize and leverage from one student to the next.
Okay, so definitely a topic we'll keep going with. So thank you for that. And I agree with, I'd follow up on Ms. Kelly's point on page 16, where I see the tuition going up over half a million dollars, so I don't get how we have sped savings. And I know that there's more involved with that than just tuition, but I don't know if that's, if it's an easy answer now, great, otherwise I can wait till next week.
Yeah, I think we need to consult a little bit deeper with the department.
Okay. I would just give you a heads-up regarding that data-driven decision-making position. I definitely can see the idea of the technology component of that expenditure, of finding a way to, you know, whether if it's infant in campus isn't serving us well there, or whatever we're using for that data. But adding a full-time person for that is something I'm going to need to be sold on. I'm going to want to hear a lot more about that, because to me, so much of that data examination should already be resting with a tremendous number of our administrators. So I'm not seeing, I just wanted to give you a heads-up. You know, I'm not seeing that as being a pull-out 1.0 position, but I just, you know, look forward to hearing more about that. A few others.
Again, that was part of an offset as well, so it's not really an increase, but we can get more involved in what the responsibilities of that individual would be.
I guess, because it's listed as a $343,000 increase, I'm not sure where the offset is?
Yeah, we can talk a little bit more.
That's fine. Hold on, a couple of others. For the athletic coaching, I'm assuming that the need for 14 is because of the multi-levels in terms of, is it JV and varsity? Because obviously, I'm not assuming our hockey teams get four coaches.
No, multi-levels, yes.
Okay.
Now, those levels may not all materialize based on student numbers or student-athlete numbers, but we need to budget just in case those participants do materialize.
Thank you. Just a couple, I agree with Mrs. Gerber's question, the class size adjustment. I'm not clearing the word "adjustment" there, that's on page 26. Again, I'll follow up with that. I didn't know if you could speak to the reference to legal services.
Well, we have explored and are looking at the idea of having some, a percentage of someone on staff to offset some of the outsourced legal costs. We think that we can definitely save some money in legal fees by having somebody that is contracted with the district in-house.
Okay, thank you. I'll be very curious to hear more of that. And then my last comment is just, if someone can take a look on slide 28 and fix some of those DURG references, I think Weston would have a heart attack if they saw themselves referred to as a DURG-B district, but there are a few others that are also in error.
I'll make sure that our staff takes a little closer look at them.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kelly?
Sorry, real quick, I just, I know we haven't talked about it in detail yet, but I'm assuming that the accelerated math plan or whatever we have is factored in here?
We can talk a little bit further about what that will look like going forward.
Mrs. Vitale?
And I'm going to want more detail just about where we are with early, with the literacy program and moving forward with a new curriculum in terms of just the timeline.
ELA, you mean?
Yeah.
English.
English, right-to-read the legislation and what is being done this year, how that is being funded, what is, you know, just what next year is going to look like, and if we're on target for implementation, because we haven't really discussed it. I know a lot of work was done in December, and we'd appreciate an update in, you know, the next few weeks as we dive into the budget.
So, Mr. Testane, we normally, if you want to speak to the Google form where we submit questions, and just when we will receive that, and how you would like to proceed?
Yes, that will be made available tomorrow morning, and questions can begin to be added to the document, and we will then answer those as quickly as possible.
So we will, next week on the agendas are typical normal sections that we do in the first round. I'm sure Meg will be able to send to you the section, so you have that in your backup, but submit the questions, and I believe, is there a day by which if we're going to discuss the questions on Tuesday, what day would you like the questions submitted by? Usually, I mean, I won't say what it is, but is there a day that we need for that, for board members to submit those questions by?
We would hope by Friday, if possible.
Might need a weekend day?
We will do our very best then to answer them.
I was thinking Monday, no, but I'm okay.
I mean, if possible, if not, we will do our-
Okay, as soon as humanly possible.
We will do our very best to have those answered in time for the meeting on Tuesday.
Right, there has to obviously be time to answer them, so thank you very much. You know who I mean. All right, here we go.
Mrs. Jacobson, can you tell us, when will we get the agendas so we know for sure where to put our focus?
Ms. Brown, can we send that out to the board members, just the section, so they have that tomorrow? Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, Mrs. Jacobson, I apologize, last question. Is this posted already, so that, when would members of the public have access to this?
In about an hour.
All right, we're going to move on, everyone?
Just a quick one.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
Just in the budget book on the calendar, I think that to answer the question about what we're, I think it's on the calendar, what sections of the budget we are addressing. I think on the calendar, I just- I think on the, on the calendar, I just.
Budget meeting calendar, so 117 is targeted enhancements in drivers, instructional services, supplies, text materials, other purchase services, tuition, contracted services, and capital. So that will be.
The handout is helpful, too, just because it gives the page numbers as well in the backup. So thank you, though, for pointing that out. So if you wanted to get started tonight, you know.
Well, and just for the public, if they, you know, for future meetings, that is a one.
There's a one-stop shop for all of these dates and what we'll be covering. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to 5B, waterfall and cash flow for Board of Finance Capital Planning Workshop, Mr. Papa George, enclosures one and two. We last looked at our long-range waterfall in September. The town, as many as the board knows, and many of the members of the public know, but maybe you don't know, the town is also, has a capital planning working group that's been meeting for, you know, maybe over a year now, that the major boards are a part of, as the town looks to their long-term capital needs, just town-wide, school, town facilities and needs. So we, every year, there is a capital planning workshop, and that's at the end of this month with the Board of Finance. So I thought it'd be a good idea that we revisit our waterfall, go over the cash flow, and answer any some lingering questions that have been out there regarding buildings, and numbers, and estimates, and just make sure we have a chance to talk about this as a board before we head into some of those capital planning working group meetings, and before Mr. Testa and some board members and Mr. Papa George go before Board of Finance and just tighten this up and resolve any lingering questions. So what we did was, there were submitted questions, but I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Testa or Mr. Papa George if they have any opening remarks on any updates or changes that they'd like to point out. And then we can go over some of those questions that were submitted on, on this item and open up to the board. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just to start, I actually have to be honest. I don't know if you've ever seen the cash flow sheet that's before you tonight, which is something that was asked for from the working group from the town, which is why we came up with that. So it takes the totals for the projects and breaks it out for cash flow for each year, and it helps with the bonding for the town to figure out what is gonna get bonded and what type of bond, and if it's gonna be banded or bonded. So that's where that worksheet came from. Other than that, it's very similar to what you saw in September. There hasn't been any changes. We, I take that back. We did make a few changes that we spoke about at the, at a few meetings back, where we moved a couple of the projects around to line up with some of the air conditioning projects that are out there right now. Other than that, I didn't really prepare a lot. I figured if we would answer questions.
So there was some questions that were submitted ahead of times. Mr. Papa George did take a look at and was able to provide some more, and shed some more insight. One of the questions was why was Dwight, the Dwight renovation estimated with six classroom addition from a 378 to a 504? And that, that decision was made to, looking at Dwight as a 504, when Mill Hill was only approved as a 441. So to add additional space there. What would the cost be as a 378? The previous estimate for a new 65,000-square-foot 504 school was 42.5 million in today's dollar. Eighty, 58 million after escalating 4% year-over-year for eight years. Removing six classrooms would reduce the building by significant square footage and bring the cost to 38.5 million, and to 52.5 million after escalating 4% year for eight years. There was a question regarding what was leading Dwight to be recommended to a new versus a reno. There was many challenges that led, led us to feel that the new versus a renovation would be more suitable. It would be much more difficult to convert the existing building to ADA compliance. There's been questions around air quality and concerns raised. Also, the proximity to the property, property line does not allow additional space where, to be added where needed. And because of the current layout of the building, an occupied renovation would be pretty much impossible. The typographical layout would also increase the building renovation costs. There was a question regarding any other project updates, such as the sewer line versus the septic, and the conversion from septic to sewer was included in the project cost on the waterfall chart. There were some questions raised.
Before we move on to the next section, for anyone following at home, this is handout number five. And also, just before we go on to the next question, just maybe just give board members if they have any questions on that information at this point, on question number one. If not, we can move on to Jennings. Okay. Number two?
So there was some questions that were submitted regarding Jennings renovation and addition.
Mr. Papa George, and we may have talked about this briefly at another public meeting, but with regard to the sewer line, two quick questions. One, what is the feasibility or possibility of remaining a septic or similar system, not sewer, with a new build? Is that possible? And two, I know we've said that we've built in, you know, costs for that sewer, but just to be clear, that would be what we anticipate are costs. The town would also have to be doing work for that, too, right?
That is correct. So to answer the first part of your question, is it feasible to remain on a septic system? Yes, it is. There are commercial buildings that do have septic system. Is it recommended? We do not recommend it because of the issues that we have had, because of the topographical area. We've just continued to have issues with the backflow and refeeding and needing to be cleaned on a more regular basis than the typical system. As for the cost for bringing the sewer line up, yes, that, that would be our share of the cost of doing that. The town would anticipate neighbors in the area wanting to buy into the system. So there would be some offset in costs for the town side on that way.
Okay, and just finally, is there a significant cost difference? Which I understand you've illustrated, and thank you for answering the questions, about the reasons why the sewer is preferred. But is it a, is it a large, significant difference in cost by remaining on a septic?
So the sewer system is approximately, I'm talking off the top of my head, I can get better numbers for you. But it's approximately $1 million of that project was to bring that sewer line up to the school. Would it be 100%, reimbursed, or not a cost if we didn't do the sewer line? No, because there'd still be costs associated with putting the new septic system in.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Vitale?
That was my next question. You would be putting a new septic system in if we did a renovation and not use the existing septic system for, you know, a renovate-like-new building?
Correct.
And gonna have just some follow-up questions in terms of what repairs have been done to the current system? What the average lifespan is of a septic system? When major renovations to our current system were last done? I have, you know, having had my kids at Dwight, I am aware of some of the issues that that school has faced over the years. Anyone who has voted or stood at the outside of Dwight for any certain period of time very often is greeted with the smell of a septic system, which is not very pleasant for guests, and definitely not for students that potentially are playing outside. So expect some follow-up on that.
I just have a follow-up myself, actually. The estimates in the 1B question, the cost, that, those are numbers are pre-reimbursement numbers. Those are gross, not net.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Yep, go ahead.
A few questions, and I, every time I look at this, I see something new, or I'm worried that it was on a previous draft and I missed it. So I always feel the need to apologize ahead of time. But first, just wanted to check if this is the number for Dwight at a 504. What is the Jennings number for a 504?
No, that was the next question. It was also asked if Jennings was estimated at a 4, 504. No, it would remain at a 378. It would include the addition of one classroom, but it's a music room to remove the portable, but the music room would not count in the capacity.
And why was the decision made not to add a second level?
That is a very good question. We could definitely take a look at that. We could also look at, move, changing it to a 504. But because the project was out a few years, we, we didn't reevaluate it at this time. So those were the numbers that were on the waterfall for many years. And I have not looked at Jennings as a school to be renovated because of how far out it was.
Okay, so that's simply a to-be-discussed kind of idea, as opposed to that's what you're thinking is best? Because again, we, there's the feeling of, we kind of get one shot at, at giving ourselves some size, and which always gives us more breathing room, so. All right, so not too much to read into that at this point. But obviously, the, the cost will go up getting closer to the neighborhood of Dwight's project if we do make that commitment.
Correct. I think your work in the next couple of months with the districting will help play a role in what that future looks like.
And then secondly, is, and again, if this was on a previous draft, sorry for missing it. I was wondering about the placement of the Walter Fitzgerald air conditioning prior to Ward's. And also, I had thought WFC was air-conditioned already.
Majority of it is, there are some areas that are not. So there is some small areas that still need air conditioning.
Okay, so had that always, because I had thought Ludlow and Ward were back-to-back. So why was that swapped? If I'm, if my memory is correct?
They were swapped to meet the cap placed by the town for the 12.5 million a year for cash flow on the cash flow chart. So by spacing them out, it allowed us to meet that cap.
Okay, because if I'm looking at the 2030, 31 budget line, that is way past 12.5. Between the air conditioning projects and two building projects, but are those just all in there as placeholders?
Those are in there as placeholders.
Okay.
The town is, working group has asked for a five-year projection, so really the town goes out five years.
I would love to hear their reaction to 2030, otherwise, but, thank you.
I'm just gonna follow up on the Jennings cost question. I presume that this estimate is based on our long-range facilities plans with the deficiencies and the full-size classrooms that are needed, as well as the code upgrades. It's, it's all-inclusive in terms of, that's kind of where this number is based on, right? Is those deficiencies that's in our long-range facilities plan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So there was some questions that were submitted around the ECC. Again, these were established before both mine and Mr. Papa George's time. They've remained there as strictly a placeholder. Once a determination is made for a location, they would need to refine the numbers based on the location-specific needs.
My follow-up on 3C, I think that might be B, I don't know, but it says 3C. The, needed the cost estimate to make Jennings a one-site ECC. Knowing, just for waterfall and cash flow purposes, we know that, at this point, what we have on here is 37 million, pre-reimbursement. I know that you don't have the numbers for this, but do you think that it would vary greatly, given that most of the work at Jennings is really upgrades in core facilities? Do you think it would vary very much from that number? Do you know what I'm saying?
From the 150, well, 300?
From the 37 million.
For the total, for the year for the cash flow?
No, that's not what I meant. Go ahead.
I, I think what Ms. Jacobson is trying to say is, if we converted that school to a one-site ECC, would the cost estimate be similar to renovating and upgrading if it were to remain an elementary school?
It would be, however, there is actually more involved with an ECC location due to the effect of her bathrooms and bathrooms required inside classrooms. Currently, we only, the model we use is for kindergarten only, so that's four classrooms for typical. By doing an ECC, if we're adding eight or 10 classrooms, we'd want to see bathrooms added.
Mr. Risa, go ahead.
I, I know we'd want to see that, but it, it's not a requirement, correct? Like if, if the bathroom, and I could be wrong, I'm asking. So some of the kindergarten classrooms that are there now already have the plumbing, they already have the bathrooms. But are you saying that all of the classrooms would have to? Because I don't, I don't believe at Ward, they all have them, do they? Oh, they do, okay. So that, that is an actual requirement by the state?
It's not by the state.
Okay.
All right, anything on three? Before we move on, ECC numbers. I, I ask this question, too, because if you notice on our waterfall, the ECC numbers that we do have on here that's allocated to the ECC, the $887,000, is significantly out on this waterfall, 230 to 232, as location one and number two. Understood they've been sitting there as placeholders for a while, but given the conversations that we're having around ECC and the charge and whatnot, based on what gets decided, that could be something for the town to know that that's something that could change, both in scope and time, I would presume, depending on what the board does.
Correct, and that's why you'll see on the cash flow chart, even though our cap is 12.5 million, we did leave room for adjustments in there, for some type of adjustment if something came out of the districting that needed to be adjusted. We also felt comfortable leaving some money in, room in there for other repairs that may come up, such as HVAC equipment or other large equipment that may need to be moved into the waterfall at some point sooner than later.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Testa, Mr. Fo, Four, Mr. Four, cash flow.
So there are no current updates to the cash flow document, and we're waiting to hear back on state reimbursements soon. So again, any updates on reimbursements, not currently. The other question was, would altering the size of Dwight to a 378 and Jennings to, as a 399, change the cash flow? The answer is yes. But without more specific work and information, we cannot redefine those numbers further. The numbers in the waterfall are in the industry standards and best practices. And then there was the last question around rebuilding or relocating Tomlinson. Again, location and size would determine what the cost of a new middle school build would, would cost.
So just on Tomlinson, and I, I apologize, because we are still looking into it, but I was just informed just a short time ago that there may be some lease obligations with Tomlinson to remain a school or a school facility from the donation to the town. So we are looking into see if we can identify this information.
So just to be clear, you're talking about a deed restriction or a lease?
I'm sorry, yes, deed restriction.
Not a lease, a deed restriction. So when the family that gave the property or the building, whatever, to the town, that there is a possibility, that you're exploring, that there is a deed restriction in writing, potentially in perpetuity, that, that makes it remain, but we don't know that.
Correct.
Thank you.
It's something that was shared, as I toured the building, with building administration, and I don't think that was just something that was made up. So we think there could be a possibility that that remains the case, but it may not. So there's a lot of historical investigating that needs to be done to confirm or deny whether that the original building was donated and those were the conditions that we accepted it as a town.
So it's safe to say that we're going to be actively engaging with the town departments that, that would be working on this to explore that, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, this is not on our waterfall. It's not something the board has put forward, but it's an idea that's been floated. So just wanted to get it out there, have a brief discussion on it, and get some idea around this. The $600 per square foot that we're using for renovation numbers, does that apply to a middle school as well? Is it the same roughly, the 600 square feet for Build New?
It is roughly the same.
Okay, so if you know the size of Tomlinson, you can get a good idea. Okay. Mr., Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Two questions. First, on the topic of Tomlinson, I didn't submit the question, but I think it's one thing I hope staff does at some point in time. We have put so many Band-Aids on that building between the continual flooding issues with the cafeteria, et cetera, et cetera. Is that, not to throw a real challenge at you, but at some point, there might be something really, really significant that does need to be done there. And so I don't actually think that's just a pie-in-the-sky idea of what do we do about Tomlinson. I do think that's worth looking into, because at some point, that building may need something very, very significant. And do we want to do that, or do, is there a whole other direction? very, very significant. And do we want to do that, or do, is there a whole other direction needed? So again, I didn't submit the question, but I do think it's worthwhile. Not that I need you to respond to that unless you have anything you'd want to say about the state of the building.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to tell you that since I've taken this position, and we've had a nice, long meeting at Tomlinson, the cafeteria has not flooded since then.
Okay, please find, okay, I'm Red Sox fan here. You just jinxed everything so badly right there. But the second question I had is through the capital planning, and again, this may have nothing to do with the school system, but just wondering if the property at Giant Steps, the one that we were not to, I'm not even sure we're allowed to mention it, but I'll mention it, but that abandoned building, has there been any discussion of what is going to happen with that space?
I'll defer to Mr. Asa and Mrs. Vitale, as they've been serving on it longer than I just started on there, but not that I've heard, not that I can recall.
Not, not that I'm aware of. If, if it was, I missed it. I, I will say that there's been a tremendous amount of discussion about urgent and, and forthcoming issues on the town side, including, you know, the, the WPCA and, and all sorts of other things that I, I don't recall discussing that building at this point.
And Mrs. Jacobson, if I may use this opportunity to give a plug, because we're on this topic, and I do know one group that has their eye on that site would be Parks and Rec, in terms of, you know, what are the possibilities for field use there. But I, I do hope, I, I don't want to wait till the end of the meeting to say this, so I hope you'll allow me this latitude, but just to mention Thursday night's meeting of the master plan for Parks and Rec that is going to all four major town bodies, and that I just want to encourage parents to tune into that. It is on WebEx, WebEx only, and just, again, talk about issues that you don't want to not know are being talked about, planned for, allocated. It's, they are eagerly awaiting the results of our conversation as well regarding what's happening with our properties. But conversely, it's going to be really valuable to know about those conversations as well. So just a plug-in to people about that.
Yes, fair point. It's all connected, the town, what's going on with the town and the schools. So good opportunity for us to talk about this this evening. Yeah, Mrs. Vitale.
Just to follow up on that, and about Dwight, I believe the master plan had pickleball courts next to the tennis courts at Dwight, which is where the septic is at Dwight. You know, no more Dwight Fair because of the septic field there. So I don't know if, if you know, or Mr. Papa George knows, if there was any discussions on that.
Everything related to Dwight has been, is on hold, waiting our conversation.
Okay.
So that, as they're, as they're beginning to put them out over, you know, year one, year two, year three, that site specifically is, let's see what the Board of Ed does.
Thank you, Mrs. Max and Kelly. Thank you for the latitude, Ms. Jacobson. I'll let you get back to the agenda. We hear you. Yes, Mr. Asa.
Mr. Papa George, you, you touched on this, and, and I just want to be clear that, you know, we, we're talking about a $12.5 million cap, and we're, we're working with the Town Capital Planning Work Group. But when you look at a year like '25, '26, and '26, '27, '27, '28, we're significantly under that $12.5 million cap. Can you just explain to the board and to the public how the conversations with the capital working group have gone in that they know that we could potentially need? Or are they looking at it like, okay, on these years, we have more on the town, because the Board of Ed is going to need more than 12.5 million in future years?
I think you hit the nail right on the head. We've, we've made that very clear, that we, we are trying to be fiscally responsible and good neighbors. If there's years that we can save on and allow the town to do additional projects, that would be so, as long as it would be reciprocal down the line, as we may come into a point where we have to breach that 12.5 million.
All right. So I did just in the backup, on the, with, at the end of the questions, provide the working group dates. That's coming up this Thursday, starting the 12th, the 19th, and the 26th, starting at 4:00 p.m. If anyone would like to join on WebEx or come in person, that's down at Town Hall. And then we will be attending the Board of Finance Capital Planning Workshop, where the Board of Finance reviews things for the schools and for the town on January 31st, that is scheduled for. So just some projects, dates to keep in mind in terms of how we discuss our facilities going forward. So, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we were just going over the questions, because I had some questions about the, I was holding off, because I thought we were just...
Oh, no, it's open. No, go ahead, go ahead.
Apologies.
No worries, no worries.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Papa George.
I didn't know there was an...
So just a couple of things. Just, first of all, and I apologize if this was discussed, I'm sure it was, I just can't recall, just the difference in costs between North Stratfield and Osborne Hill with the air conditioning. Is that because Osborne Hill has more air conditioning in the building right now, so it doesn't need as much, whereas North Stratfield has, has less air conditioning as of this moment?
That's correct. So we worked with the engineers, and we also work with a professional estimator to come up with our numbers for those projects, based on what's available now.
Okay. And then just the other thing, I'm assuming is just the difference between Ludlow and Ward with the air conditioning. That's more because of the escalation costs, since Ward is slightly after Ludlow, so it's more expensive because it comes after Ludlow?
Correct. There's escalation costs in there, and also building layouts make for different technical parts that have to be done, whereas Ward is a single-story building and Ludlow is a multi-story.
Got it. Okay. And then I did just, out of curiosity, so with Osborne Hill, there is a mention here about enclosing the walkway. Just, you know, remember all those meetings that we went to all those years ago, and it ended up with nothing. So hopefully, this time, they'll actually be able to enclose that walkway?
We do hope so.
It would be nice, yeah. And then I guess the other thing, too, and, and I know, I guess there's really not much we can do about it, but I, I do feel a fair amount of anxiety looking at, for instance, like, the last year of Ward, getting their air conditioning is 31, 32. That means a third grader today won't go to high school if they're going to Ward with air conditioning. And I just, that's really upsetting to me, you know, and the fact that we have Jennings and Dwight, too, you know, that they're placeholders, and there's no air conditioning for them as well. I mean, we know how brutal these buildings can be. And I just hope, you know, I, I understand we have the cap. I understand that our hands are tied in some ways, but I just, I feel like we've got so many students and so many staff who are in really unhealthy environments, you know, for a few months each year at least. And I just, I hope that there's some way that this board and the town can find ways to make it a little more comfortable for them while they're waiting, you know, for the, you know, kind of like waiting for the lifeboats to, you know, get their air conditioning. I just, you know, I, I just find it hard to believe that many people in our town would really like to spend all day in a 90-degree classroom. But that's what we're asking hundreds of students and staff to do, and we will be asking them to do that for another nine years. So I just hope there's some way that we can find ways to make it a little more comfortable for all these people.
Absolutely. We continue to look at different possibilities, different funding sources. We're always, we always have our eye out for what's available. Something I don't know, it has not been shared with anyone yet, but the Ludlow High School Controls Project, working with UI, we are expecting approximately a $75,000 refund from UI because of that project, which was something that we did not anticipate when we presented that project. It was a non-reimbursable project, and now to have $75,000 coming back to the town for that project is great news.
Anything else, Mrs. Gerber? No? Okay, Mrs. Vitale.
Yeah, I mean, just following up on Mrs. Gerber's comments about the air conditioning in our buildings. You know, this board made a decision to fast-track the HVAC upgrades, and that did come, you know, with the cost of moving Jennings and Dwight back further. And those projects have been pushed back before. And I know that we have work here with, in terms of potential redistricting and facilities utilization, but I would just ask the board, or maybe the facilities committee, to, as much as I hate to say it, look at potential Band-Aids for any air quality initiatives we can look at in those buildings for the next decade. Because, you know, it's, it's a concern. It's a concern to this board district-wide. And I, I think that we would remiss in not acknowledging the fact, as every other elementary school is getting their upgrade in Phase One, two schools are being left out of that equation. And I'm struggling with it, but, you know, we only have so much resources, and we are, we're doing the best we can to move this program district-wide. So I hate to say Band-Aid, but maybe something for our facilities. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll do it. I'll say it. And as the legislative session begins, we can all be advocating for continued support from the state for our HVAC projects, which I will do, and invite others to join me in doing so going forward. Waterfall, cash flow, and anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
Ms. Jacobson, just really quickly before, because I know we need to move on. But with regard to the, the dates at the very end here, so just so people are clear, we have the Town Capital Planning Work Group, which has been working for months on a five-year plan, you know, budgeting plan. But what was unsure before is now sure and is scheduled, and that's that Capital Planning Work Group that has happened in the past.
As far as I have been informed, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's on the town calendar yet, but I didn't...
Okay. So just if there's any confusion, that is based on information...
Two different things.
Yeah, we, we've been provided information that this is going to be happening, but, you know, we're not obviously speaking for the BOF.
Of course, yes. Scheduled. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Thank you, Mr. Testani, on putting, answering those questions and, you know, providing clarity on some of the lingering items that we've been talking about. Okay. Item number six, old business, approval of the 2023 Board of Education Charge to the Consultant, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the 2023 Board of Education Charge to the Consultant. Can I get a motion, please? Mr. Asa, second. Mrs. Kelly, thank you. Okay, so just to recap, before we open it to the table, we had a first read at our January 4th meeting, our, our facilities planning workshop that we held on January 4th. Board members provided some ideas on some consensus changes to that draft. Those are included in enclosure number three for this evening of the handouts, that incorporated those, those consensus changes from our conversation on January 4th. So you can see very clearly in red and strike-through what were initial ideas that we were talking about have been proposed to be changed this evening. And I think that provides the background that we need to move forward for this evening. But there was a lot of other backup as well that was provided for this evening's conversation in the handouts. So the redistricting guidelines from 2015 are in there. The newly revised facility planning principles that we just updated in December of 2022 are provided. And there was an ECC rubric back when we were having discussions about the ECC in 2009 that I thought might be helpful to include in the backup for this conversation as well, so people know some of the things that are needed when looking at pre-K classrooms and where that space might be located. So... Am I missing anything, Mr. Testani?
There were a few questions that were sent as follow-up to last week's meeting that we did provide in your backup documents as well. It's handout number one. There was a question regarding budgeted funds for the consultant for this year and next year. We do have approximately $54,000 budgeted for consulting work this year and next year. And the facilities department does have some additional funds that they do have in consulting services if necessary. So we do have some funding that has been set aside for that specifically. There was a question, and we did provide some information from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, U.S. Department of Education around, is there any benefit that supports a 50-50 or 60-40 typical pair to student with disabilities ratio? That was, that's what was provided for us thus far. It's obviously an extensive document that provides overview, purpose, and some reference to, to research that has been done around this. And I'm sure there's some questions around that, and Mr. Mancuso is here, if, if need be. There was a question around the number of FTE that would be needed for the additional 14 programming rooms, not including certified support staff that may be needed in whatever schools, depending on the locations, to meet the IEP needs of each student, or any transportation costs and any other ancillary costs. We're looking at about 51 positions, that's certified and non-certified, and an estimated cost that would exceed over $4 million, plus, again, any other certified staff support additions, transportation, and ancillary costs that go along with it. And the last question that was raised was around if we did transform Tomlinson to a grade-six-only middle school, and Woods and Ludlow serve as seventh and eighth graders. Right, again, we would have to get more specific in how any certification concerns could come into play using the certs of our current staff. But initial costs, we already got an estimate of a minimum of 15 additional bus, buses that would be added to the current number on the road.
Before we dive into the questions really quickly, I'm not seeing it here, though. Is the estimate in? Okay. I'm just wondering if we could possibly print out the SLAM estimate, just because it, I know we got it in the backup and it's posted, but it's not at our desk. I don't know if there's a way for us to get that.
I printed it out.
Oh, you printed it out? Yeah. See, the SLAM, the, the, the actual, sorry, everyone, bear with us.
Number two, SLAM.
Yes. Sorry, thank you. In the meantime, we can go through some of these questions. Should we, let's hold off on the consultant estimate thing until we get that back up. Anything on questions number two, three, and four? That anyone has? Mrs. Max and Kelly?
Just to clarify, for question two, having read all of the support material, there is in fact no data, and again, I'm, I'm not talking about the merits of the argument, but there is in fact no data that supports 50-50 versus 60-40.
Not that we're aware of. I know we're still reaching out to other resources to try to provide us more information. In the meantime, but this is what we've uncovered thus far.
Yes, Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education. We reached out and have been in contact with our, you know, CES, the Early Childhood Council consultant that we work with and that works with, you know, that we meet with monthly. And this is the position statement that she sent us, and she is doing some research for more specific data regarding the benefits of a 50-50 or better peer ratio.
Because in reading it, obviously, there were, there was references to the science, and I'm not, it's not that I was then going to go into all the footnotes and start putting up all the studies. I will admit, I didn't do that. You know, there, that it was compelling that having the inclusion is helpful for the students. But again, a lot of the position statement was about including disabled peers with their non-disabled peers, and that's not even what we're talking about. We're talking about a model of classrooms, sped classrooms, in which we are trying to include non-disabled peers. It's kind of the opposite of what this position statement, happy to go back and show you the passages that confirm that. I'm just saying that that wasn't the, the main thrust, or certainly not of the several initial pages, which are about supporting inclusion in early childhood classrooms. And that's not what we were talking about, which was the opposite of that. Again... Again, I'm just hoping that they have some data that is very specific to this question because it is a multimillion-dollar difference that we would be asking to make a commitment to, and without that data, I would be very uncomfortable doing so.
Okay. I understand that, and we are working with CES and our Early Childhood Consultant to get that. I will tell you, particularly pre-COVID, you know, and now post-COVID, there is a strong push by the State Department of Education to work with school districts on planning to operate early childhood programs with a minimum of a 50-50 split.
And providing the money for that, right? Sorry, sorry, you walked right into that.
Any other questions? Can I... Oh, sorry, Mrs. Vitale.
I mean, I just want to follow up on that. And I repeat comments, I think, at a last meeting, just in terms of our school's responsibility to provide the least restrictive requirement for our students who are identified for receiving special education services. And ideally, when we had this discussion about sort of revamping our early childhood programming, I think the goal was not for those classrooms to be viewed as special education preschools, but just preschools that all children, regardless of ability, are included in the definition of a truly inclusive environment for teaching. I think we're having discussion now because we haven't gotten there, because we haven't been able to maintain those peer ratios. I commend the work that this board has supported thus far and the work of staff in order to provide those environment for our students. Speaking as a parent, I can speak to the benefits of inclusion, and, you know, I think it is a goal that we should continue to strive in and invest in. And, you know, when our students are first joining our school system, I think that Mr. Mancusi, not to give you more work, but I think if you look at providing a strong early childhood inclusive environment, you know, sets students up potentially for success in their later elementary school years and potentially avoiding some costs later on. Thank you.
I'm just waiting for this handout to come around. I'd like to go... Oh, sorry, Mr. Asa, did you pull up?
Yeah. With regard to these... Question three, these 14 programming rooms, we've talked about this, and in facilities, we did ask you to provide us, you know, not necessarily pie in the sky, but a realistic number moving forward. And this is where we landed, based on what you presented. But what I was wondering is if you could just give me an idea of... Obviously, this is not all at once. So we're talking, just to be clear, right, a multi-year phased-in approach here? Or are we talking about... I don't want to ask the question while you go. I want to give you the... Basically, timeframe here is what I'm interested in.
When we put these numbers together, the charge was to put the numbers together for programming needs or expansion for '24, '25, and moving forward. So these numbers before you in terms of the 14 programs, it would be over time, and it would be prioritized based on need, whether that be ECC where that lands. Certainly, we want to look at the TLC and split that program. That would be one classroom. And then the Early Literacy Academy expansion past '24, '25 to account for, you know, when our fifth graders at the end of next year go to middle school. But it's... It was not, when we put these numbers, it was not with the understanding that this would be done all at once.
No, but to be clear, what we're looking to ask SLAM to do is provide us with scenarios that take these into consideration. So it is conceivable that there would be classrooms not used for these purposes in the beginning, but slowly phased in over a couple of years.
Yes.
Just to add to that, it all depends on if and when and how many. This is assuming all four-year-olds would have a full-day program. So we could basically, in essence, control how many full-day program students we would allow at the time. So this would be if we did them all at once. This is what the need would be, based on the enrollment being at full capacity. If we decided to run two full-day programs and then have a waiting list for full day if necessary, if it needed it, then it would be less. So it's really based on need and the decision of this board on whether to offer full-day programming to four-year-olds, three-year-olds, or no one.
Okay. So I'm just going to throw it out there that I think, as we get further in this discussion, and I have some things to share, you know, as we approach this work with SLAM in a somewhat potentially phased approach, you know, getting answers to the ability, you know, or feasibility of even considering a one-site ECC, I think that will kind of formulate our discussions. And I'm thinking that these should happen over the coming months because as we start to get our scenarios back months from now, we need to be able to know, okay, if they've held these rooms, are we actually going to make the commitment to fill them? And I'm not saying... I don't want this to stop or slow down this process. It can't, but I just think we need to be cognizant of it, that we're going to have to continue these discussions.
Mrs. Vitale.
Mr. Asa, I agree. And just to the point of Mr. Testani about preschool and the finance committee, we actually had talked about something to look at over the coming year in terms... And we've talked about it in the past, about tuition and needs, supply and demand in town for preschools, you know, whether or not to charge tuition, what that tuition should be. And I think that that's another financial piece that might play into. We're getting some of the potential costs, but there might be some, you know, income to potentially offset some of those costs. Just wanted to bring it to the full board that discussion happened committee.
Okay. In handout number two, the SLAM cost estimate, I do really want to go for a second, just so everyone has an idea of what they've sent to us in terms of the costs, the Phase One, the Phase Two, what they have built into this estimate. And before we dig into this, I'm going to invite Mr. Asa. We had a conversation with him on Friday to just, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Asa, walking through this estimate and just, you know, I'm not saying go bullet point by bullet point, but this is really the full breadth of the work, both in this fiscal year, that takes us through getting presentations on the scenarios and then continuing work into the next school year. So there would need to be some funds in this upcoming budget to continue the post-work, so the follow-up questions, the follow-up numbers, the follow-up meetings, so things like that. So just so everyone's clear, we're going over two fiscal years with this. But other than that, Mr. Asa, go ahead.
Okay. I mean, I don't think I need to dive deep into this, but just to give a little background. So as was discussed at the last meeting, Mr. Papa George and Mr. Testani said that they were going to convene with SLAM, and Mrs. Jacobson and I, as board leaders, participated in that meeting. And it was actually very informative. We talked about a lot of, you know, what has been discussed at the board table. And, you know, I flat-out asked Mr. Zubba, you know, the way we're going about this and the charge, are we helping you, or is it possible that we're hindering you or handcuffing you? And he was very happy to get that question because he wanted to talk about it. And what he made clear was that in no time in the past, either with us or any other district, had they experienced the idea of getting a charge that was so granular and so in the weeds with actually naming scenarios. Whereas normally, the process is what we've done in the past with them, is we set our goals, we give them our goals, the goals of this, you know, project, and then we give them criteria and guardrails to stay within. Now, he wasn't saying that we shouldn't give them any of the information from these scenarios, but what he said was, instead of naming them as scenarios, it could be beneficial to bullet them, bullet the information, the pertinent information, and maybe on some of them not get as granular, but give them what we're looking for. And he also talked about, you know, we talked about the idea of closing a school or taking a... Repurposing a school. And he thought that, by and large, we need to take what he called a phased approach to this. Whereas while we give them the charge, you know, three months from now, approximately, we can expect to get maps and scenarios back. But what they'd like to do first is kind of what we've outlined, in determining whether we can function without a Dwight, without a Jennings as an elementary and repurposed as an ECC. If you remember in 2020, when we got plans, the idea that was out there of closing Dwight was predicated on Mill Hill being a 504. Repurposing Jennings was not, but if you think about it in the proximity, moving all those, you know, Dwight kids, they were looking at that. He believes that they would be able to, in a phased approach, do this work and come back to us and kind of give us an idea, is this feasible? And that would kind of formulate where they go from there. So that's what I mean when he said a phased approach. And I think what he did when he structured this cost estimate is he kind of did that. So in Phase One here, so at the top, he's talking this two-phased approach, right? One additional suggestion added to the BOE consultant's revision of the bullets, so we'll get to that. But Phase One, and based on our guidance, you know, they would go through all of these different items, and for budget purposes, they broke the fee down here below. So there's some initial work to be done, and then they get into the scenario planning where they've listed... They went and formulated this based on our meetings, our first read, everything. So, you know, I was pleased to see, quite honestly, the estimate being less than I thought it would be. But I think ultimately, what they're saying is, in taking this approach, that it will be the most efficient, it will yield the best results, but also will allow them... I think Ms. Kelly at one point in one of the meetings said, are we handcuffing them so they might be able to come up with a scenario that none of us have ever thought about? And we actually talked about that, and they brought it up because, for example, with the ECC scenario, you know, they're talking about running multiple different test runs, different test scenarios within that. And they're talking about doing that with this pricing. So, you know, I think that's where we are, but the Phase Two begins once we've identified a scenario that we want to move forward with. And that's, as Ms. Jacobson said, that's where we do the follow-up, the narrowing of everything, feedback from the BOE, the public, responses. You know, they would continue to come and coordinate with us. So it's not just, just as it always has been in the past, it's not... We don't get these scenario maps and that's it, right? I mean, some people, I think, are worried that, let's say they give us a few different scenarios, and we have to pick one. Well, what we need to do is go down the path of one or two and then work with them to refine things and make sure that we refine it in a manner that it makes the most common sense, fiscal sense, and educational value sense. So, you know, I'll leave it at that, Ms. Jacobson, if I've missed anything, but I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, and that's a great summary. I think the only thing that I would mention to the board to pencil in is that we had SLAM pencil in our May 9th and our June 13th meetings, depending on where they are in the process, just so they have... Are those two meeting dates of ours on their calendar as possible dates to do the presentation? That may change, but just for everyone to know, that May 9th and June 13th were two that we did have them hold. Mrs. Guernsey.
Just a question about the timeline. You mentioned, or Mr. Asa mentioned, three months, and I'm just wondering, is that taking us through all the tasks then, or is that just... How does that break down with the timeline, the various tasks?
So what they had told us, because we specifically asked, because the board asked, how long is this going to take? So from the time they get the charge, they believe that they need at least, you know, at least three months to come back with scenarios. Now, in that time, they may come back to us and say, hey, you know, we're looking at this, is there any reason we shouldn't be going down this rabbit hole, let's call it? So their recommendation was, along the process, to continue to periodically meet with Mr. Testani and Mr. Papa George and potentially, you know, some members from the board, just so there's board input. Any major decisions or anything, obviously, would be discussed in public, but sometimes there may be questions that can be answered that are just logical. So I think that will help it. But yeah, I mean, they need a solid three months from the time they get the charge to get that.
Thank you.
I'll just add one piece that, with the caveat that we told them, and, you know, as soon as they're ready, we'll try to get them in front of us, but those were really what we thought were two dates before the end of the school year, and everyone kind of goes away into the summer. If they're done by May, to just use those, that we would have to schedule something special, so...
And to Ms. Jacobson, just so I can say, we also talked about, and we let them know, and we put them on notice, that if they come to us sooner, that we will be able and willing to schedule special meetings specifically for this, or try to, you know?
Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Just briefly to that point, would it make sense possibly to do this as a standalone meeting anyway?
If I can get staff, board, room, Fair TV as a special meeting. I just know going into the spring and looking for meeting dates, there is not really a lot of options available at this time. Board meetings, other board meetings, concerts. So happy to try. Don't get me wrong. As soon as we get them, I will work very hard to have a space for us to do that, but also just knowing that Fair TV and staff and whatnot, too. So absolutely, we'll try very hard.
And just lastly, Mrs. Jacobson, I'm going to hold off at the moment because I know we're going through these questions, but I will be bringing forth a proposed amendment tonight to the charge, which basically addresses the top portion, based on the feedback and the discussion with SLAM.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Of course.
For the three months, is that for... That's for everything on this? Or just Phase One?
Just Phase One, yes. I mean, we are... For this fiscal year into that May 9th and that May, if you see like the detail in the estimate, the spring will be the presentations, and then it kind of ends there, and then the summer picks up for the Phase Two. Like after we get that presentation, I'm sure that we will have a lot of questions and follow-up.
And do you anticipate possibly getting updates after they do each task prior? Like, I'm looking at the 10-model elementary school scenario. Like, would they potentially have an answer to that question sooner?
We did ask that.
Earlier in the process? That we wouldn't necessarily need to wait three months for that?
I mean, we asked them. We asked that of them, and they were actually almost suggesting that.
Thank you.
I would say, Mr. Papa George, if you... You don't have to come up, but if I'm speaking anything out, Mr. Testani, Mr. Papa George, if I'm misspeaking on anything, please correct me. But it seemed that they were very much on board with looking at that, let's see, 10ES model scenario and testing those on Dwight and Jennings, you know, right off the bat, and coming back to us and saying if it's not feasible, giving us the data as to why.
Sounded like they wanted to do that pretty much immediately.
Okay, so they could potentially... It may not be May before we hear back from them in a public meeting? Potentially.
Yeah, I mean, potentially. We don't know. I mean, they did build into this estimate up to three in-person Fairfield Board of Ed public meetings. They included one state BOE meeting. I'm not sure if we need that, but maybe a little clarity around that. And Mr. Asa already spoke to some of the... And some, and Mr. Asa already spoke to some of the smaller working group meetings that they have to have to have a meeting with Mr. Testane or Mr. Papa George or something, and then to get some clarification. So there is some flexibility for them to come to us in this estimate, and we definitely reiterated that as soon as we could get either all of the information or some pre- initial questions answered, we would welcome the opportunity to hear that.
Great, thank you.
Sure. So that is the estimates. You have two, three other handouts that, before we get to the, I just would like to give board members opportunity to talk about if they'd want to. I thought it would be a good idea, like I mentioned previously, to provide the 2019 ECC rubric, our revised planning principles, and the 2015 redistrict guiding principles. So if, those are, you know, reference documents, but if anyone has any, I did ask the question about the ECC rubric, so I don't know if Mr. Mancusi wants to come up, and I believe others asked the question as well, just about, is this like still the first-in-class rubric in terms of what you would use? Because it's just a few days, years old, so I just want to make sure that this is still kind of...
I will tell you, this rubric was developed by Dr. Jones. When we rated the sites, you know, back in, I think, 1819, these were the areas in which we looked at each of the sites and we ranked each site in each area on a scale of one to five, five being the best. And that's how we ended up with, with Burn, Holland, and Hill as being the top, you know, sites that we thought at that time. This was primarily developed by Dr. Jones, based on her, you know, experience and knowledge of building projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mancusi. Oh, Mr. Peterson?
The fundamental question I have about the rubric, the thing that's not on it is single-site versus multi-site. And how would you, how would you balance those? Like, what on the rubric would you be willing to sacrifice or delay for the sake of a single site?
Now, that would be something I would have to, I would want to seek input from the ECC staff on that instead of, if I spoke to that question or answered that question tonight, that would be, you know, one person answering that question. I will tell you, and as I stated previously, that if there were a choice in an ideal world, there, you know, the ECC staff at Ward and the ECC staff at Stratfield, and Jerian Mitchell can speak if I'm misspeaking, it was pretty unanimous that if they had a choice, they're really, the choice would be very easily made for, in favor of one site.
Well, I understand, but you see, we're having two kind of conflicting set of priorities here. And at some point, I think we're going to need to have a recommendation from you about which is preferable, and in what way we can make that judgment. You can help us make that judgment.
If that's something you want me to come back to you on, I'd be happy to meet with the group again and come up with a recommendation, but I think, you know, I appreciate the dilemma you're in. But, you know, the ECC staff is like, they're pretty clear on what they, what they feel would be the best programming for students in an early childhood center would be at one site.
Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
So, understanding Dr. Jones developed this rubric and everything, but she didn't apply the grades, right? She didn't apply the one through five, right? That was from staff input.
Well, that was primarily by me and her.
Okay. So you're very, then, safe to say, very familiar with how, what grade it was determined? Like, how did it become, you know, a two or a three or whatever? So it's not like, I understand this is work, but it's not like you're in the dark, correct?
No, we reviewed the buildings, we toured the buildings, we reviewed the school maps, and, you know, it wasn't, and we made the determinations on the ratings.
Okay, so this is not necessarily hard and steadfast. Your evaluation of this criteria today may be slightly different?
Stick with me for one second.
Okay.
Just, just a little bit of the detail that we looked at when we were looking at the rubric in terms of the ADA accessibility, we looked at drop-off and pickup areas for ECC, we looked at elevator access to be able to move throughout the buildings, depending on what building we were in, we looked at the amount of stairs that were within a building. For HVAC, we looked at, was there AC throughout the building? Was there AC in partial classrooms, related service classrooms?
Rob, you don't have to go through the whole stuff, I mean, we can see that here. It's just, I guess the question is, you know...
I'm just, you know, seeing this for the first time this week, and no disrespect to Dr. Jones, but I just don't understand how, like, what's the difference between, if there's HVAC in the cafeteria, is that a five? Or is that, what's, why would it get a three? It's either it's air-conditioned or not. If the full building, does, is it a five? Or, you know, I don't understand how the ratings, like, what's the difference between a three in air conditioning and a five in air conditioning, or a three in a pickup, or a one?
Mrs. Tally.
That would be my question, so I can better understand our assessment when we decide to look at it more holistically.
When the board, and many of us, not all of us were on the board at that time, I think for the HVAC, it was just available classrooms that had air conditioning, was looking more at classroom space and whether or not buildings had, you know, the percentage of air conditioning in the building. Obviously, if it's fully air-conditioned, that building might be more conducive to provide space for preschool. We looked at, referenced the number of bathrooms, classrooms that had bathrooms in the classroom, accessibility to the playground, accessibility to service rooms, as Mr. Mancusi said, ADA compliance. The board, at that time, we were part of that process, we toured the schools that were identified as being potential sites, you know, spent a decent amount of work on that. To Mr. Peterson's point, you know, back then, it was very much the ideal would have been one location, but that, we were, it was looked at more as a long-term solution that we had to plan for, and based on enrollment projections at the time, and trying to provide a more inclusive environment, we started going down this road of needing to provide ECC space in the elementary schools. So I think the rubric, you know, regardless of who created it, I think does make sense. You know, many students, our youngest learners, and those with special needs, you know, air conditioning may be more important for that age group, especially if students are medically compromised. ADA, I think, is pretty obvious, and bathroom for these kids might be, working on toileting skills. And that's the road that we went down, and we, last time we're doing a charge to Melona McBroom, we ended up with identifying two elementary schools to look at in addition to keeping space at ECC Ward.
No, I think the rubric's great, I just didn't, I mean, either they have it or they don't, so...
Well, some schools with air conditioning, you know, may not have been fully air-conditioned, but there were enough classroom space that met the rubric that they were considered on the list.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
Yeah, just as a follow-up to Mr. Testane's point, I actually think that's a really good point. I very much appreciated this when it came out because it gave us a basis for making a decision. But in fact, if you look just at that HVAC section, that's an opportunity for one school to have a 25 or a five and immediately eliminate one. In other words, it's, if that's that important, that it's worth ranking at a potential 25 points, but I agree, how would something earn a three? That doesn't make sense. It is a one or a five sort of thing. So in, it almost would make more sense to say, as a charge to SLAM, please note the categories, but not the scoring, if that makes sense? Again, I'm not sure what to say, but it just, is HVAC important for these children? I'm not arguing that. Is the ADA compliance? I should certainly think so. You know, the stairs, that was a real concern at Stratfield. Those little eggs having to get out to that, those playgrounds, I mean, it was tough, and it still very well could be. That also might be a point that staff wants to reconsider and say, actually, it's worked great. Or, no, it really has been a problem having OTPTB in this part of the building versus this part of the building where their classrooms are, which at Stratfield, I believe, there's a decent distance there. So while I love the idea of our giving them some sense of what are things that are essential, because I don't consider that SLAM's expertise, I do think there's work to be done here in terms of giving them the most valuable information to do the, you know, most relevant assessment of our facilities.
Well, you know, hopefully in the next couple of years, HVAC, everyone will pretty much be on the same setting, so that is less of a consideration that we have to worry about.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Mancusi, yes.
Is there a charge here for me to clarify or to follow up, like, in it?
Sorry, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, go ahead.
I don't know if you just want to jump, but I guess, my, here's what I would not want. I would not want this used as-is, as the means for evaluating, without your having, now, how we have, if we are absolutely committed to voting on this charge tonight, which again, we had talked about at the last meeting, that it might make more sense to wait till the 26. I think that would buy, on this point in particular, some invaluable time for you to have the time to go to staff and say, let's rethink with a specific eye towards, if we're recommending a facility, we need to, I don't think this is something any of us are equipped to do here at the table. I don't want to use the time for that because we would be guessing. And this document alone might be a good reason for holding off till the 26.
I'm going to follow up in terms of the spirit, and I think that Mr. Asa described to the consultant, was that they very much are in favor of receiving guidance and guardrails and what something might need that they might not be aware of. So it can be as simple as, that might not be our job, actually, but Mr. Mancusi's job to work with Mr. Testane, to be like, as you're working on the scenarios or, and some of these consultation meetings that they have built in here, to be like, the schools for those locations, you know, have to at least have some bathrooms in the classrooms, or whatever it may be. I don't know if that we need to put that in here as our part, but go ahead.
Yeah, and I just, just to expand on that, I think Mrs. Jacobson said it correctly, that, you know, in some of those consultative meetings that they're talking about along the way, would be bouncing ideas and getting the expertise of our superintendent and our director of special ed, you know, so they don't go down rabbit holes and start, you know, trying to plan scenarios that have, you know, classrooms and space that doesn't work, you know?
Appropriate spaces, which could be a simple addition, if we wanted to do something that, you know, facility-appropriate locations, something like that.
Then I guess, my personal response through the chair to Mr. Mancusi, who asked the board a very direct question, I would charge him with redoing this, but it doesn't need to come back to us. I'm perfectly comfortable with, you know, as they're looking at this, if they have questions, oh, you know, this school looks like it would be a perfect, you know, something that you had not considered, to Ms. Kelly's point of, please give us those ideas that we haven't considered. And I am fine with this not coming back to us and this not holding us up, but I do want this rethought. I don't think this document, and again, it was a great starting point, but I don't think this document, as it's currently figured, factors in the current staff input from Stratfield, and parts of it don't quite make sense anymore. So I, my, again, this really through the chair to Mr. Testane, is that I would ask that staff reconsider this so that we have guidance ready for when we're asked.
Sounds good.
I'm just wondering also, concerning the guidance section of the draft, were there any reactions to that from SLAM about, you know, quantity, level of detail? I don't know, I mean, just general response to that?
We went over, I actually shared screen in the meeting, went through this draft document with the red line and whatnot, so they really could see. It was really on the scenarios, and please, Mr. Asa, if you want to back me up, that they felt we needed to make some changes that would be helpful to him. Whether we do or not is up to the board, obviously. But the guidance piece is, I think that they found that, it's really, no, they didn't have any problem with that at all, as far as my considerations in terms of that piece of it.
I think what they, what they wanted to stress was, what we kind of all know, right, is that this, and Mrs. Gerber has said in the past, this is guidance, right? It's not, what we don't want to do is tell them, this is hard, fast, you have to do this. We give them our guidance, our aspire to, our goals, and we let them do their job. And we know that in doing so, they may not be able to meet every single one of these criterias. So I don't, I don't necessarily think that this guidance is going to stop them or handcuff them, but it doesn't, it also doesn't mean that every single thing in here. So for example, in the last charge back in 2019, it included, and this draft includes these redistricting guiding principles, the only approved document we have of that is from 2015. So as Ms. Maxon-Cannelli said, it is assumed that this is the document that's in here. But we know for a fact that in some of the scenarios that came back last time, they couldn't meet all of these, their guidance. So, you know, Mr. Papa George, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, was there any pushback specifically on the end of the document, on the guidance, or any lines that I don't recall?
The only piece I remember is how we made that change to the counts for the grandfathering pieces, give us the count for the high schools, the middle schools. I believe that was welcomed only because they would have been doubling or tripling the scenarios by doing calculations for each scenario times two or three for that. And for the first phase, getting, we need to know those counts in those schools so that we can look at what those utilizations would be. That's pretty simple for us to do ourselves. And then in Phase Two, we would be able to then go further and deeper dive. I mean, this is just part one, really, in that information. Go ahead, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, so I just, just wanted to take a second here, just to kind of understand exactly what it is that we are at some point going to be giving SLAM. So right now, what we have before us, that what's, the motion that's on the table is to approve the Board of Education charge at the consultant, and we know that Mr. Asa is going to be planning to make an amendment. So whichever happens, whether the amendment passes or not, it'll be one of these two documents. We will send it along with the facilities planning principles, like, so we're going to give them a packet with that, the facilities planning principles. And then my question is, these redistricting guiding principles, we are going to send them the 2015 redistricting guiding principles?
Go ahead, Ms. Asa.
So we did briefly speak about that with SLAM, and, you know, what they had said, knowing that some of the stuff in here is not necessarily applicable, because I think there was something about phased-out temporary, you know, there's some things in here. So what they had said was, you can certainly, you know, remove that, and also, if there's anything in that document that you specifically want to add to the guidance of the document, because I did let them know that it was voiced, that there may be an amendment, and I don't know if that's going to come forth tonight, of striking these principles from the document, but whoever were to make that motion could also include, if there's anything in here that they want to incorporate, just in the guidance document. But yeah, the way, the way it is assumed now is that your packet is basically what it is.
Just a quick follow-up to that. So they did pull up the 2020 presentation, just in terms of that those guiding principles were in there, and as Mr. Asa said, in those scenarios, it was very clear that these were not considered lines, but guidelines, so to speak, because many of these things came back in the presentation. So, Mrs. Guernsey, did you have follow-up? Oh, sorry, I thought you were raising your hand. Go ahead.
I guess I just wanted to give a heads up. I think that...
much support, and I prefer this format, which we're going to talk about in, hopefully, in a few minutes, but since I saw that, which is, you know, this is all happening very rapidly, actually, really like the idea that we're looking to help, not hinder, and have been thinking about an additional bullet point that hopefully would add to the spirit of that, which I may like to make an amendment to after Mr. Asa's amendment, and I apologize for not having it ahead of time, because this is the process that we created and this is where, when it came to me. So, thank you.
Go ahead. Yes, Mr. Asa.
Okay. So I think at this point, it might be a good time to make my proposed amendment. So just to be clear, my amendment is based off of the enclosure number three clean read, so pages three and four of enclosure number three. And I have provided handouts to the board, so I would ask, would it be okay to agree to waive the reading of the entire thing and work off of the document if I explain it? Or do you want me literally to read everything?
I would recommend making an amendment...
A motion to... You need to make a motion first.
Yeah, you'd make the motion to amend based on the closure provided by Mr. Asa, and then we can discuss all of the differences, so you don't have to make a motion that includes all of this in there. It's just as provided by Mr. Asa.
That's what I was looking for. So I would like to make a motion to amend the clean... The document on the table, to read as proposed by Nick Asa, which has changes to the document above the word "guidance," as illustrated in the document provided here.
Mrs. Vitale, second. Mr. Peterson.
Okay. So just to go through really quickly and highlight some of this. So again, this is purely based on the feedback from the conversation with SLAM on Friday. Nothing really major changing in here, except that way it's worded. So for the first bullet point, I have made a change to, for it to say, target 85 to 90, 85-90 percent operational utilization rate for all schools after, and I've added the words "after submitting..." Subtracting for unique specialized programming. And then the second bullet point, we discussed, in the past, we've given them like a specific number, like, we wanted to get below, let's just say, I'm showing it out there, below 20 percent. What they're suggesting is keeping the wording that's here, but what I've done is I've added in a manner that is sustainable. So in a way, it's making them know, when they do this, not to try and get us to like 24 percent, but also not to discount a super-good scenario that they come up with that might be 20 or 21 percent, if they feel it's sustainable when putting their test to it, looking at numbers. So that's the premise behind that. What I then did was I struck out all of the language of scenarios one through four on this clean read, and I replaced it with what's in front of you here. And I retitled it "Scenario Planning." And the premise behind this is that what they were worried about is, if we give them four scenarios and they come back with five scenarios, how are they... How is the public going to correlate between our scenario one and their scenario three? So they would rather be the ones naming the scenarios by number and getting this. So for "Scenario Planning," I put as a bullet, "Consider the feasibility of closing or repurposing one of the lower-capacity elementary schools outlined in the 10-year waterfall." Obviously, that's Dwight and Jennings. I am putting that on there because I don't want the consultant firm to feel like they're coming up with, you know, this idea. We've talked about this, and no agium, we know why we're asking for this information. And then the secondary portion is still in there from the prior first read. What would that mean if they said, would it require adding classroom space to another elementary in school in order to accomplish target utilization above? And I mentioned target utilization above because I did make that change for the range. The second bullet is, instead of all of the granular that we had for scenario two, the revised scenario two, I have worded it as, "Consider the impact of ECC programming, including exploring a one-site location or assignment of required classrooms at one or more elementary schools." And this is based on their feedback, because they felt that with the information, the guardrails we give them, and the consultation with the administration, they'll be able to explore the different plans. Now, just so you know, they have clearly been watching our meetings, they've been following all the documentation, they are in tune. So they, you know, I can speak to that. They were very well-versed. The third bullet point I left in there, because that was part of the clean read, and that was the middle school scenario of sixth grade Tomlinson, seventh and eighth Ludlow and Woods Middle School. And finally, it remains, balance elementary utilization and bring the disparity in racial composition between any one elementary school in the district, K-5 average, within the limits required by the law. And that's spoken to above. So that is my amendment. I did not touch anything from the word "guidance" or "below."
Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you. And thanks, Nick, for putting this together. I like this plan. I like the phased-out draft and giving them more leeway to make their decisions. My question with the bullet point for ECC is, when we talk about exploring a one-site location or the assignment of required classrooms at one or more elementary schools, is that assuming Ward stays? The Ward location stays along with other elementary schools, right?
I think what they wanted the ability to do is run test cases in both scenarios. So they wanted to be able to test this out, but it would depend on what the administrator, like, what Mr. Testani, when he gives them this, if we wanted specifically to say, you know, not at Ward or leaving Ward, we could put that in there, and Mr. Testani could give them that information. I will tell you, one of the feedbacks here, just one second here, was, you know, they had said, he, in his budget cost estimate here, he was saying that this becomes a sub-scenario test. So I think that was what I was looking for. So a sub-scenario test. So bear with me one second here.
Can I follow up really quickly while you're doing that, Ms. Asa? Mrs. Vitale, I think when we get to the guidance part, where we start talking about the number of classrooms, because we are ultimately going to have to make some decisions on that in this charge, it could be something that goes into that guidance section, if there's any clarity that you think that we might need to make on that.
Yeah, and in their quote here, they are stating that they will be looking at status quo with, for ECC and CLC programs, with up to two iterations, relocating the four ECC classrooms to another, expansion up to two iterations, and, you know, et cetera. So, yeah, I think honestly, they would be running test cases, unless we told them specifically not to, in the various scenarios.
Okay.
Not necessarily bringing us a presented plan with that, but they would be running the test scenarios to determine, and then provide the feedback.
Yeah, I can't imagine, in the scenarios where we are not able to do a one-site ECC and we're spreading it now through multiple elementary schools, that we would not keep Ward, because obviously, it's already established, it's already, you know, the classrooms we need, the bathrooms and all that kind of stuff in the playground, so, but clearly, let them do their job.
Yeah, and I think that was pretty much the consensus, Ms. Jacobson and Mr. Testani, if you feel differently, but yeah, I think that was the consensus.
Okay.
Make it clear that we count Ward as space in our district that is...
Right. Thank you.
Sorry, Mrs. Gernsy. I have a hard time seeing the sides.
I'm happy to jump in at any time and make my amendment, but should I wait to do that? Are we still talking about the beginning part? Because mine is related to the scenario planning, so...
I think everyone should just talk about his amendment first, and then we can get to amendments of the amendment, if that's what we want. Does anyone have any other questions on Mr. Asa's amendment before we get to amendments of the amendment? Mrs. Kelly.
Not... It's more of a comment than a question, but I do support the way that we are doing this. It is... I hate to use the word generic, but it gives them the latitude and the leeway that I think they need to do a meaningful analysis. So I support that.
Okay. And we can do the amendments to the amendments, but before we get back to the main motion, we're going to have to talk about the numbers on the rooms. Okay? All right, going forward. Mrs. Vitale.
So we can make amendments to the amendment now?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make an amendment to strike, consider middle school grade level changes, sixth grade at Tomlinson Middle School, seventh and eighth grades at Roger, Ludlow, and Woods Middle Schools.
Can someone give me a second? Mrs. Kelly? Mrs. Vitale?
You know, I expressed some concerns about this scenario at the last meeting, but I will admit that Mrs. Maxine Cannelly definitely moved me with her words about the thought of having all of our sixth graders together in one campus for a year. But I am concerned about the transportation costs. I'm also concerned about just hearing from families about transitions, that it just potentially adds another transition during some tumultuous middle school years, potentially. And for that reason, as well as just one less scenario for SLAM to run and potentially speed the process along, I will not be looking to, you know, explore this option at that time.
Ms. Asa? Sorry, Mrs. Kelly.
I agree. My objection lies more with the transitions, like, three transitions in four years, that does seem like a lot to me. And I just, I would rather us, if this is really an issue as far as the team structure is concerned, I would rather adjust that in the budget process, rather than in a whole redistricting process. So that is why I support that.
I absolutely agree. This was in no way, I mean, I think that there, we've heard concerns about the middle school, but I think there's other ways of addressing it outside of this process, and would support furthering those conversations.
Mr. Asa.
Yeah, I will admit, I was intrigued by this idea, and also the, I think it was talked about, like, a K-six idea. You know, I'm very intrigued by that, but I also know that that is a major fundamental shift in how we do things, and I'm not necessarily opposed to talking about it down the road. But I'll be honest, when I saw the, just purely for me, when I saw, you can talk about the transitions, but also the busing with a minimum of 15 buses, and knowing what those costs, I just, I don't see how we could pull this off. So I would support the striking of this, even though, like I said, I'm intrigued by the idea.
Mrs. Vitale.
I was also intrigued by the K-through six. Actually, that idea has been on my mind since we talked about the middle school feeder pattern, and we were having a discussion then, but right now, I think that's part of a, more of a long-term plan and something to consider for the future. My concerns about busing, really, just some of the conversations we've had, and the finance committee, just even having those buses, even forget about the cost, just being able to, we're having challenges running our current buses, so the thought of adding potentially, what was the number, 15 additional ones? I'm just really not sure that we would be able to do it. But the transition was really the big thing for me.
Mrs. Kelly.
Real quick, I was also intrigued by the K-six. If for no other reason, then that's one extra year they could get recess. I had to say it.
Knew it was coming. I knew it. I knew it. So good. All right. Any other comments on the amendment to the amendment? Okay. If not, I will take it to the public, and this is only for the amendment to the amendment of striking the middle school thing, the middle school scenario, the sixth grade at Tomlinson. Anyone like to comment on that? No, okay. All right. All right, back to the board. All in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Gernsy, Mrs. Jacobson, sorry, Mr. Asa... Oh, oh, sorry, unanimous. I just like saying your names so much. Okay, Mrs. Gernsy, you are on.
Okay, so I think I'll just go ahead and say the motion, and then I'll tell you where I'm coming from. So my motion would lie under scenario planning, it could be the last bullet there, and it reads this. My motion is to add the bullet point, "Consider middle school and high school feeder patterns to avoid splitting any middle schools to more than one high school."
Can you read that one more time for me?
So it's, "Consider middle school and high school feeder patterns to avoid splitting any middle schools to more than one high school."
Point of clarification?
I'll second it for discussion purposes, because I am totally bewildered as to what the motion is, but I'd like to hear more, so I'm seconding it.
All right, so, Mrs. Gerber, second? Okay. Mrs. Gernsy?
So this is intended to be a point of discussion, and I had brought this to the attention of the board on previous occasions, that I was hoping that in some way, we could address the split of Fairfield Woods Middle School as a feeder to the high school in this discussion, and as going through the process, realizing there was really no place for that to fit in without it adding to the cost and complication. But what my intention here is to, if we added in language similar to this or this, the idea would be that possibly it could help give more flexibility to the consultants as they're looking at the elementary school populations, because clearly, those are going to impact how they feed to middle schools in terms of numbers. So it just got me thinking, just this afternoon, that maybe this is a place where we could fit in the flexibility that they could have to, I hate to say play around with, but just experiment with how the feeder patterns could change. And this was sort of, this came to me also because of Mr. Sahagian's suggestion, which was clearly alluding to this. So as we're deleting the middle school changes at the sixth grade and seventh grade level, it was a way that I hoped we could address some of the challenges with middle school. And again, not to hinder it and say that we'd have to change it, it was in the spirit of allowing more flexibility to the consultants. So not saying that I got this right, but I thought it was worth discussing, and again, this is sort of, this is why I've been frustrated with this process, because there are so many issues that I'd love to speak about, but we don't have time to. So it's like my chance to do that. So, thanks.
Anybody, board members have any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm still... I'm having trouble understanding what it is you're trying to do.
Like, the goal?
Like, what is the goal? I mean, I guess because right now, the way it works is that where you go to elementary school determines where you go to middle school, and it determines where you go to high school. Are you asking them to change that?
Possibly changing, yes, yes, that they could change that if it was beneficial to the facility utilization and our overall goals of this process. So the idea that we received in an email today inspired me to bring this up as a point of discussion. So like, for example, if there were five elementary schools that could feed into Woods in a reasonable way, I wouldn't want them to hold, like, if that could help the utilization situation, then... So like, for example, if there were five elementary schools that could feed into Woods in a reasonable way, I wouldn't want them to hold, like if that could help the utilization situation, then I'd love to give them that flexibility because it also solves a problem, which is splitting a middle school into two high schools.
And I guess, and maybe I just, both of my children went to middle schools that split. One went to Roger Ludlow before the redistricting, went into Woods after the redistricting. And I'm not saying that there weren't times where it was kind of not a great thing, but I think there were also positives to it. So I'm just not sure if I want to, if I feel comfortable completely rejiggering how we determine where students go to middle and high school to avoid splitting a middle school. I'm just not sure, you know, so are we saying that we would just kind of draw a line down the? I just, because I, like I said, I mean, I was the member, board member who got back to Mr. Sahagian and said, "That plan with the five schools all feeding into Woods would immediately make Woods over capacity." And I know he said, "Oh, we were over that anyway." But I just feel like if we are really trying to do something here that's going to last a while and help with facility utilization, I don't feel comfortable immediately having one of our middle schools over capacity.
No, agreed, absolutely. That's, that wasn't my intention here. In fact, I was hoping that it would give more flexibility as we're adding in these additional classrooms if, in fact, the utilization changed and there were schools that, where their population shifted and it was much lower. I mean, I don't know how it's going to pan out. So I just thought this was an opportunity to provide more flexibility in terms of the feeder patterns, allowing them to move around the feeder patterns. But I mean, if the will of the board is not to do that, that's fine. I just thought it would, it could be helpful.
So two minutes, just can I follow up? We do have already in the charge on the top, possibly reconsider secondary school feeder plans. That is already in this draft. So they do have that ability, right? To do what you're saying? Or you're just looking to be more specific on the feeder?
Yes, I was.
Oh, Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
So two points. First of all, I'm just in support of my fellow board member. I would have no problem with them taking a look at it. You know, again, I don't know how much that does for budget crunching or anything, but I have no objection on its face because I know that there's, for some, that that is disturbing. Although, again, I'm the one who liked the idea of a Tomlinson sixth grade so that all of the kids of this town could spend time with each other. I love that idea. I have no objection to the amendment per se, but I do think we need to be very clear. And to Mrs. Gerber's point, there are two ways to do this. It is either put five elementary schools in Woods, or it's to completely change how we do feeders, and that is to draw a geographic line and say, as of your graduating fifth, I can't say graduate, moving up ceremony in fifth grade, as of sixth grade, it is your geographic location in town that determines your middle school and subsequently your high school. And so I don't know if we would have to be able to give that fear, but those are two completely different ways to do what you're describing. And I also feel the need to throw this bomb into the mix, and I'm fairly confident that this is not what you intend. But to address Mr. Sahagian's point, excuse me, to Mrs. Gerber's point, that the current ward makeup would immediately make Woods too big, what you're inviting the consultant to do is to put Dwight at Woods to pick the smallest elementary school so that you could fit five schools. If you think we've received emails up until now, go ahead and talk about, I mean, again, Stratfield and McKinley have been bust across town for years. So I am all in favor of, is there a way that that can stop? Because it was promised to Stratfield in what year? It was supposed to be a temporary measure. And not only did it not happen, they made Stratfield go farther. But I'm just saying that the way they would satisfy that is to pull out one of the ward schools and to put in a smaller elementary school. But again, all of that said, I have no problem with supporting it to at least get the information because I think otherwise it will be something you will always wonder.
Mrs. Gerber?
And just a little sidebar here, it is quarter of 11:00. And we've already had a couple of amendments here about this, you know, this is a really important and weighted discussion topic. And I personally don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight. And there may be additional motions, I don't know. I just feel that, I don't think it's a really good idea for this board to take this serious issue and either stay up until who knows when or finish it in 15 minutes if we don't vote to extend. So just putting it out there that I think it might not be such a bad idea to put this off to a date certain, to vote on this. And that way we can, there may be additional information we can get. We can get motions in advance that we can look through them. If we have questions, we can answer them. That the public will have the opportunity to see these amendments and weigh in on them. You know, I just think we really want to make sure that we're not just kind of bulldozing through this and that we do it right.
No, I agree, that's, that's fine. But I would like for us to get through the document and so that the next time we have a draft, that everything that people are thinking or questioning on this draft, I can incorporate into the next draft.
Except that you can't make changes at any point. This is now a motion before us.
Well, right, no, that's what I'm saying. We could, but get through what people, get through this document with amendments and motions that people want to do, and then we can postpone the vote on the amended motion, if that's what people want to do, so we can get a clean read. Otherwise, we're just going to do this again next week.
Well, no, obviously, we have to vote on the two amendments that are before us. I don't think that should necessarily cap all of them because, again, it is getting later.
Well, yeah, so in that vein, go ahead, Mrs. Kelly. No follow-up?
We have stayed later for other things. I don't know why we're drawing the line in the, I understand it's very important, but we have also gone into the midnight hour, much to my not liking to do, but we have done it. It's not unprecedented. And I don't understand why we would treat this any different than, it is, I understand, it's a big project, it's big. We have made budget decisions in the midnight hour. We have rushed through other programs at the midnight hour. And I really have no interest in dragging this out any longer than we need to. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, sorry, Mrs. Gernsy, but in that vein, I do, I would like a motion to suspend the rules and extend the meeting to 12:00. Mrs. Vitale? All right, all in favor? Sorry, Mrs., no, sorry, who's going to second? Mrs. Kelly? Back to the board, all in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gernsy, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, and Mrs. Kelly. Motion fails. So you guys don't want to extend at all? Does anyone have another motion? It was five? No, it wasn't? Yeah. Does anyone want to make another motion to extend, or are we ending at 11:00? Mr. Peterson?
I'll make a motion to extend to 11:15.
Go ahead, Mr. Isa. Oh, sorry. Guys, we can, if we could say it out loud because Carol can follow on who seconded? Mrs. Max and Cannelly. All in favor of extending to 11:15? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Gernsy, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, and Mr. Peterson. So I guess we're getting 11:00. All right, but we do owe Mrs., we do owe a vote on the motion. So any, I will take it, does anyone have any other comments on this motion before I go to the public? All right, to the public on the amendment to the amendment, which Mrs. Gernsy put forth. No public comment? Okay. Oh, sorry.
Jill Vergara, 271 Old Post Road. I don't like this amendment. I preferred in 2019, when we weren't even dealing with so many different things, when we took feeder patterns off the table. And I think that this is an appropriate time to do that, to put people's minds at ease. And it's a lot of instability and unsettling. And I don't think it's the appropriate time to do that.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Mrs. Max and Cannelly? All right, all against, all opposed? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gernsy, Mrs. Jacobson? I can't see you, Nick. Are you opposed? Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly?
I feel the need to say, I just wanted to show Mrs. Gernsy some support. So I just, I feel the need to say that, I feel utterly hung out to dry there, but that's okay.
Ms. Jacobson, I'm sorry, I just, I guess if we need to go to 11:15, if you let me make a motion again to do that so we can get six votes to go because I want to, I want to get the rest of this stuff done. But I just want to say it that, no. Yeah, so is that, is that possible, Jess? Okay, so I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:15. 11:20. Okay, Ms. Jacobson, my motion is to extend the meeting to 11:20, so it's a new motion.
Mr. Peterson seconds the motion, all in favor. Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Asa, and Mrs. Jacobson? Are you raising your hand raised? Mrs. Gernsy, Mrs. Gerber, Vitale, and Vitale. All opposed. Mrs. Kelly. Motion passes. Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, did you have something? Was somebody going to? Would you like to make a motion? Mrs. Gerber? Voting on that, that's what you're about to postpone? Oh, you want to keep talking about the amendment?
I apologize, no, my interest would be on voting on the amendment. If it passes, this now becomes the draft that the public will see and that we are then, that becomes the main motion. So we have to resolve the issue of, are we sticking with the original charge or are we sticking with Mr. Asa's amendment?
We are on Mr. Asa's amendment.
Because one of my interests in not going past midnight is I like the idea that we vote on this. I hope it passes. And now that becomes a draft that the public can see, which they have not had a chance to see this even yet.
So then we would go on the 17th and we would put this item back on as for the revised 2023 Board of Education Charge to the Consultant as amended?
Not the 26th?
I would really ask that we not do this on the 26th, if possible.
I would agree.
It's a budget vote night.
Yeah, I think that meeting could potentially be an excruciating late one also. I'm not hoping not, but.
We have the 24th.
I guess my request for that would be that we do the budget first because that's going to involve a lot of staff. I don't know if staff would be allowed to leave after that point, but just as an agenda order thing.
So just some background, if the motion passes to postpone, what I'm going to do is put this back on for the 17th again to get, I mean, unless, I don't know what we're skipping weeks for, is my question. What are we waiting for, other than, I understood, other, wait, other than the hour? Is there anything this board is looking for on the 17th? Because as, I'm not hearing anything, so I don't know why we couldn't do it on the 17th then. But go ahead, Mrs. Vitale?
Would you consider holding a special meeting on the 17th prior to our budget, the special budget meeting to discuss just this?
I'm happy to proceed on this anyway. I just am going to ask that we not do this on the, you guys can vote however you want to vote, but I won't support the 26th. I'll put it on the agenda that way, if that's what you guys want to do. But you know what I'm saying, I'm happy to do a special meeting, but I have to check with Meg and can we get Fair TV and is the staff available? And it's a, you know, it's a coordination.
We would, we already have the room on the 17th. So that meeting starts at 7:00 or 7:30?
7:30.
If we started a special meeting, 6:30 to 7:30?
I don't know, a year, a year, a year or so. That's such a nice idea, one hour on the charge? I think it would need longer.
Well, this board just thought that 12:00 would do it, so I'm going on that.
But that's on the amendment, but okay. I mean, let's just go around, I mean, who, someone's going to make a motion to postpone and then we can discuss that.
Can we get back to my motion and vote on it?
Yes. All right, to the public, I'm going to take it to the public if you have any comments on the Mr. Asa's amendment as amended. No? Okay. Back to the board, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Back to the main motion? It's amended? Mrs. Gerber?
So I'd like to make a motion to postpone to a date certain of January 17th.
Mr. Peterson second? Mr. Asa?
Just really quick, the agenda on the 17th, I believe, is going to have our budget questions and also a quarterly report, correct?
And a dip-up view.
And a district improvement plan update. So I would suggest, I don't know if I amend your motion or whatever to make it the 24th?
She can withdraw.
I can withdraw my motion and will make a motion to move to a date certain of January 24th.
Mr. Peterson second? I'm just thinking, I'm buffering. All in favor? Oh, sorry, no, no, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Wait, oh, sorry, did I miss someone? Again, all in favor? Okay. Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gernsy, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson in favor, all opposed. Mrs. Kelly, motion passes eight-one. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, recommended motion that the Board of Education approves the following minutes, December 13th, 2022, Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes, and the 12th, December 13th, 2022, Board of Education Meeting Minutes. Can I get a motion? Mrs. Vitale, seconded by Mr. Asa. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report?
Given the late hour, I'm going to be very brief. I just want to say and give kudos to the music and performing arts departments at both our high schools. Those, the performances for the holiday concerts were absolutely amazing. To Mr. Peterson's point, for the first time, I have never been, attended both, both very different, both equally as exceptional kids. The staff did an outstanding job. So I just want to make sure that that was recognized. And again, as part of the budget presentation, I do want to acknowledge the fact that we did have five schools that were recognized as schools of distinction, Burr, Holland Hill, Mill Hill, Stratfield, and Jennings. So to the staff, the families, the students at those schools, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Testane. Committee lays on reports. Oh, sorry, Mrs. Vitale, have a question?
You referenced the substitute teacher in Phyllorite. Are you, I know that before the holidays, there was a lot of sickness going around in the school. Just wanted a general, are you still seeing the effects of flu, COVID, all these respiratory things? Or is, you know, do people get restored over the holiday break? And are we seeing any sort of staffing problems right now? Because we haven't really heard an update on that.
Well, I think it's a combination of illness. And also I think, you know, people are still feeling the effects of the demands of post-COVID working in public education. We are anticipating, we'll have to look at the numbers a little more closely at the end of January, but we were on pace to have more absences than last year at this time. So I think it's just a combination of all of it. But I'm hopeful that we'll see some improvements now that we're, you know, getting into, we need cold weather. I mean, let's be honest, the colder weather brings upon some killing of some of the germs. I mean, but it's been a rough go. And I know that, you know, staff has been spread thin. And we are having challenges again in terms of substitutes and onboarding. We just onboarded a bunch more substitutes. How long they will last and how long they will stay with us is another story. That's why I think it's important that we do. That's why I think it's important that we do exercise this effort to try to contract out. A lot of districts do do that, and, you know, we only pay for the jobs they fill, so they have a stronger incentive, they have programs to recruit, retain. All our current subs would obviously be first priority to keep, and then whatever efforts they could make to incentivize others to come to Fairfield, they would work alongside to help increase those fill rates to, you know, 80% or higher would be our goal.
Thank you.
Committee liaison reports. Mrs. Rattelli?
Thanks. Our next septum meeting will be Wednesday, January 25, at McKinley at 7:30. We are having Fairfield Probate Judge Kathleen Maxim come speak about conservatorship and guardianship, for those of us planning in advance of our children's 18th birthdays, whether your child has an intellectual disability or not, and just needs help with personal finances or healthcare decisions. This presentation is so informative. I went to it years ago, and I definitely plan on being there again. Judge Maxim is wonderful. She works with a lot of our families, is a great resource, so I highly encourage anyone out there, if you have questions about guardianship or conservatorship for your soon-to-be 18-year-old student, please attend. There will be, I believe, a Zoom link available for those who can't attend after the meeting, it'll be posted, but definitely tune in.
Anyone else? Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Again, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier in the meeting regarding the presentation of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, that while the Board of Ed is one of the town bodies invited to that, as well as the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the RTM, again, unprecedented in my memory in Fairfield of all four town bodies invited for one thing, and just really hoping that people tune in to listen. You know, these are the natural resources of Fairfield, and imposing things on those natural resources, and there has been plenty of opportunities for the public to give input in the creation of the master plan, but now it's in our hands. It's just like with redistricting, and now what happens with it, you know, it's good to know what is going on, because, you know, feedback was still appreciated by the Parks and Rec Commission. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Just very quickly, for a finance committee we met last Wednesday, got a kind of preview of this budget presentation before it came to you. We also talked, we talked very briefly about starting a review of facility rental policies, which I know is something that's also of interest to the facilities and ultimately the policy committee, so we'll see where that goes in the months ahead. And I also wanted to say that we are trying to put some momentum behind purchasing policy. Ms. Laborius has forwarded some draft comments to the Board of Finance, and we're trying to arrange a meeting with the Board of Finance Purchasing Policy Committee to try to, again, get some, get a little momentum behind that, and hopefully cap that in a way that's favorable for us.
Open board comment?
I don't remember if it was mentioned at this table, but Norris Stratfield Elementary became a certified Connecticut Greenleaf School back in December. They are now the fourth public school in Fairfield to receive this title, including Osborn Hill, McKinley, and Mill Hill Elementary Schools. So just wanted to congratulate them and Mr. Papa George for just your department's support of our elementary schools as they, you know, move forward with their sustainability initiatives.
To adjournment, recommended motion, oh, sorry.
Dave Krasnov, 155 Burr. I just asked that, thank you, first of all, for letting us see the amendment, I do appreciate it, but can you move it forward pretty quick? Delaying it two weeks seems like a lot of time when you just got to get the info to slam and get them working.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, recommended motion that this regular Board of, regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourn. Can I get a motion? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mrs. Rattelli, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming. Have a good night.